Electric.
Yeah, right.
All right, it is 5 o'clock.
We're going to open up the regular city council meeting for the City of San Clemente of January 17th, 2023. I'm going to call the meeting to order. And we, do we have any, do we have any speakers right now?
Yeah.
We have one speaker card. Concerned resident. Yes, ready? Hopefully, did you already turn it on? Did you already turn it on? I haven't started speaking yet.
As soon as you walk in, we'll put your sign in place.
Dear God. Hopefully, each of you have had the opportunity and interest to read my email dated January 15th that appears, that explains how we got to where we are today. Mayor Duncan, I read the article in the SC Times, where in you stayed. I've, quote, "I've heard the noise. It's not something that I would want to hear, but at the same time, we can't just shut the whole thing down with no plan of action moving forward. I hope for a resolution within the next year that starts to alleviate the anxiety and adverse effects, frankly, on the quality of life of folks in the San G area," end quote. First council can't shut the whole thing down immediately. You have the authority and the obligation to residents to shut down any activity that is violating our city's general plan, city ordinances, and state laws, especially when it is undisputed by our mayor that the activity is the cause of residents suffering anxiety and adverse effects on our quality of life. Quoting council member James, "It is annoying as hell." Second, not having a plan of action moving forward does not absolve you from your obligations to residents. City knew or should have known pickleball noise created a public nuisance in January of 2019, four years ago. They resolved it for San Luis Rey neighborhood by increasing the public nuisance in San G. Staff accomplishes by duping the council by submitting falsified documents and outright lies. The misconduct is spelt out in my email. Let me remind you that myself and others gave multiple ways to provide pickleball play while state parts are built, but no one has acted on them. City Attorney Mr. Scott, I request you explain to council why you failed to advise staff and council back in 2018 that by placing pickleball courts in residential neighborhoods, they were entering difficult waters and that they were putting the city in jeopardy." Our mayor's quote. After all, you were the lead attorney in the case of Thompson, of Thomas versus City Newport Beach lawsuit filed in 2016 arising from the city's installation of pickleball courts in a residential area. This cost the taxpayers of Newport Beach quite a lot of money, including a substantial amount to BB and K. Council, you have an obligation to ensure all residents have equal quality of life. You have no obligation to provide pickleball courts during the time it takes to build the courts inappropriate. So I'm asking again, please, stop the negative impact of residents' people enjoying their home. Failure to continue causes anxiety, physical harm, and adverse quality of life. Mayor Duncan's SC Time article confirms this is exactly what is being inflicted on folks in the San G area, including myself. Thank you. And I don't appreciate that, Sean, we had a discussion, or I'm sorry, Smith, about my providing you with a copy of what I would be pursuing, or I could be pursuing, as a courtesy, and it is out there for the public to see. It's appalling.
Motion to recess.
All right, thank you. Any other comments?
Oh, if I could.
Out of time.
Oh, would you like a response?
Didn't want to respond, but there was some housekeeping on.
Okay, housekeeping, and then, yeah, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
First off, the second item refers to an analysis of exposure to litigation. We're obligated to announce prior to the closed session that that relates to a general analysis of liability for operations at San Gregorio Park. If the council would like to discuss the previously mentioned draft complaint that's specific to the prior speaker, then you'd have to add that to the agenda for discussion tonight. So what's slated is a general discussion. If you'd like to speak to the specific allegations of the draft complaint, you need to add that as a late-breaking item.
Would anyone like to make a motion to add the complaint as a, draft complaint as a late-breaking item?
I was in closed session.
For a closed session?
Yeah, I was going to do that.
I second that.
So, so moved.
So it would be discussed in closed session?
Yes.
Then, I also was concerned about placing a copy of communications for the public to see when it hasn't been made public. It was shared privately.
That's the other part of it. The city clerk, thank you. Councilmember has copies available for public inspection as required under the Brown Act.
She, she has copies available if requested.
For questions?
She has them here tonight. You place them in the back for everyone to pick up along with all the other materials?
Yes, we could do that.
And have we satisfied the requirements for a late-breaking item?
Yeah, it, it came to your attention, and if the council needs to be briefed on it tonight, then yes, you have satisfied those findings.
Came to their attention after the agenda.
Came, sorry, came to your attention yesterday, so that's why it was not linked to the agenda as, when it was published.
Okay.
If it's subject to the public asking for it, are you putting?
Your comment, sorry, Ms. Martin, your comments are concluded. We have a motion on the table and a second. I think the motion was council member James, second was council member Cabral. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. We will consider the draft complaint during closed session. Any motion to recess?
That was me.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember James with the motion to recess, seconded by council member Cabral. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Okay. Unanimous. Thank you.
All right, welcome, everybody. We're going to call the meeting to order here, the regular meeting on January 17th. Our regular business meeting here for the San Clemente City Council. Do we have Russ here for the invocation? Okay. Please stand.
Our loving Father in heaven, as we commence this San Clemente City Council meeting, we invite thy Spirit and presence to be here. We are so thankful to be citizens of the United States of America for the privileges and opportunities that are extended to us through the Constitution and the Bill of Rights of freedom of religion and freedom of speech and freedom of the press and so many blessings that we wish to acknowledge thy hand in this inspired document. We're thankful for the privilege of living in this beautiful city, San Clemente, that we love. We're grateful for our civic leaders and pray that thou bless our mayor and city council and our leaders civically that they will have wisdom beyond their own to discuss and carry out the policies and programs of the city in a manner that's pleasing unto thee according to thy will. We pray that our civic leaders will work together in harmony with the fire department and the police department and all city employees, that there'll be a spirit of love and peace and brotherhood and unity and that we'll all work together as civic leaders and as citizens to make this town and keep this town great and that thy blessings will be poured out upon us. And we express our love and gratitude to thee and invite thy presence this day in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Russ. A lot of good messages in there as we start out the new year. Oh, yeah. And we are going, I'm going to invite our new chief of police services, Captain Jay Christian, to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please remain standing. Jay, just up to the podium there. And place your right hand over your heart.
And begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jay. Okay. Roll call. Say something if you're not here. Just kidding. Councilmember Cabral.
Here, present.
Okay. Councilmember James?
Here.
Councilmember Enmeyer?
Present.
Okay. Mayor Protem Noblock?
And I am here. We are all present.
Okay. First special presentation we have is our December update on homelessness.
Mayor Duncan, we do have one speaker card on this. Would you like to hear that comment first or after the presentation?
What were we going to do? Were we going to have the speakers go after the presentation?
If the speakers go after, they can comment on the staff presentation, so there may be an opportunity.
Okay, let's have the staff presentation and then we'll have the speaker and see how that works.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, just, I think it'd be wise for us at some point in time to actually agendaize that discussion to have the public go after.
After staff? As a practice.
As a practice. We don't have that.
Any support for that discussion?
I like that idea. I'm an advocate of it.
Okay. So, we have Councilmember James with a, we don't even need that. No vote on that. Okay, so we've got, we've got direction on that. We'll bring that back as a, as a practice for our council meetings and we'll see how it goes tonight. Okay. Thank you both for coming. And, yeah, let's hear the report.
Do we have the other TV working?
Ours aren't working either.
None of those are working. Okay. That's okay. We got one. Oh, there it is. It's like the Bat Cave back there.
Yeah, she came out of there.
Oh, my gosh. The lasers.
If all IT solutions were this simple.
You just pressed the on button.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Thank you, Jay. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council, Guillmina Torrico, Code Compliance Manager. And tonight I'll be presenting a brief overview on the December 22nd Community Outreach and Engagement Monthly Report that's provided in the packet. Next slide, please. This graph shows the number of individuals assisted by the community outreach team and the blue bar shows each time a contact was made. And you'll see that the December numbers show slightly fewer contacts and it's partly due to the inclement weather as well as the holidays. In December, the community outreach workers made 264 contacts and of those, 55 were unduplicated individuals as shown here in the graph in orange. Next slide, please. As part of the outreach, staff offers services to the individuals who are contacted and all of those who were contacted were receptive to some form of service. The services that were offered included food and hygiene referrals, mental health, access to transportation, referral to outside agencies like the VA or medical facilities, financial assistance, documentation assistance, and employment assistance. And as you could see for the month of December, the services that were most accepted were related to food and hygiene referrals. Next slide, please. In terms of the street exits, in December, staff did assist with five street exits. Two were to a shelter, two were re-unified with family, and one was to a facility. Next slide, please. In December, staff reported that 84% of the individuals who were contacted were open to shelter. Shelter assistance was offered to all 55 individuals who were contacted and of those, 46 were open to being placed in a list for shelter once one became available. Nine of them declined, stating that the reason was due to the shelter not being local. In conclusion, as you'll see in the report, there were two previously housed individuals who returned to the streets in December. Sorry, next slide, please. And with that, I thank you for your time and I'm available if you have any questions.
And that's, okay, that's our report.
That's the report.
Perfect. Thank you, Guillmina. So, let's hear for the, the public comment.
Donna Vedrine.
Mr. Loffler, thank you for your attendance.
Good evening, Mayor Duncan and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of creating an emergency weather-activated shelter for the homeless here in San Clemente. As a member of the San Clemente Homeless Collaborative for many years, I understand both the need and the obstacles to providing a shelter in San Clemente. A recent election in which this issue was identified as one citizens' want us to address confirmed the concern we share as a community about the impact of homelessness on our city. San Clemente is a compassionate city. We also understand that our failure to respond to the public health and safety needs of residents, businesses, and the unhoused only undermines the economic prosperity and success of our community. At the December 20th homeless update, it was reported that there were 62 unduplicated individual contacts during the month of November. All contacts were receptive of services. 82% of San Clemente homeless sleeping on our streets and public spaces were receptive to shelter assistance. Thankfully, we have leaders in the faith community, our nonprofit community, our business community, and local citizens who welcome the opportunity to partner with the city on providing enhanced solutions to a crisis that will not solve itself. This has been one of the coldest and wettest winters on record. The urgency to act is greater than ever. We would choose not to be homeless, but we can choose to offer humane support to this vulnerable population by leveraging local, county, state, and federal resources. What I know is that the determination of this city council to advance solutions, starting with an emergency shelter to provide an indoor space out of the weather where the homeless can get their basic needs for warmth, rest, and some nutritious snacks provided, is the important first step in attracting the partnership and resources needed. The city has community facilities that could be used on an emergency basis given the immediacy of the need. Let's make this the year where we move from resistance to action, from excuses to engagement, and from hopelessness to helpfulness for our most vulnerable populations. Caring for the needs of the unseen and underserved strengthens the soul of San Clemente. We will be making an important statement about our values as a community. I stand ready to help in any way I can and look forward to working with each of you and stakeholders throughout San Clemente on this important initiative. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Before we go into discussion here, I was wondering if this, if our city manager or Adam, perhaps you could discuss some of the feasibility issues with opening temporary emergency shelter in San Clemente, just broadly.
I'm happy to.
Yes, I can tell how happy you are.
Adam less so. There are, there are, I'll stipulate to the compassion that we all feel for those who, unlike ourselves, don't have permanent safe shelter in inclement weather. With respect to the task at hand that, as it's been described here, it involves lots of logistics, a number of partnerships, a significant investment collectively by the community. From a city standpoint, we have limited facilities. Those facilities are programmed. The accommodating those without shelter during inclement weather would necessitate, and I'm not making a value judgment, but would necessitate the displacement of existing activities and programs that are presently made available for our citizenry and staffing up for and creating temporary lodging for feeding and all other associated logistics at a site to be determined. We don't have an unused safe site and therefore accommodating our unhoused would again require displacement of current services and additional resources not yet identified. It would require, if we were to take this on, again, I present no value judgment, would require teamwork and identified resources and the parameters for that shelter feeding, hygiene, bedding, and the like. If we're directed to do that, we would, we would look forward to working with the community, our faith-based community and other nonprofits to learn how we can do that with minimal disruption on our, those we serve on a daily basis.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
You want a part of that?
I appreciate that. Yeah, I mean, this is why I continue to believe that the county is best positioned to create a, an emergency shelter to handle our unsheltered in South Orange County because they have the resources, the staffing, the connections, the mental health professionals, all the things we don't have that would be able to effectively, I believe, manage that. But does anybody have any other discussion here for, on our homeless update? Councilmember Enmeyer?
I think I'd, close and sank may feel for, for those who are out there in the cold during this, this weather, during the storm. I think that if, if there is something that can be done, we should look into see what can be done. And this may mean directing our homeless subcommittee to seeing what appropriate avenues are out there. And that may mean looking into funding from the county or whatever else might be there. But I think to, to just push it off may not be the best way to solve it. So, I'm wondering if anyone is open to directing our homeless subcommittee.
Do we still have the homeless subcommittee? Yeah, okay. So, we, we don't have the, we don't have the homeless subcommittee as part of our, what's the commission? Human Affairs?
Or public affairs. If I may for a moment?
Yeah.
To Mr. Enmeyer's point, I think it's time probably to develop that, not subcommittee, but a, a committee of two council members. Oh, can you hear me? Sorry. I, I think to Mr. Enmeyer's point, I think it's time to develop a committee with two council members and with several members, three, four, whatever, members of the community. Certainly just building a shelter for, the purpose of building a shelter will be abject failure. I mean, you look at what happened with Laguna Beach and the amount of litigation it created for Laguna Beach. It became very problematic for Laguna Beach. And once you have it, you can't back out of it. Additionally, when you think about the, the lot we had next to the U-Haul, we built it and they came and we ended up with a hundred some people in there. We don't want to become an attraction to people as well. So, I, I have significant concerns with, with any suggestion that we build any kind of shelter. Quite honestly, we had a county supervisor who ignored it, who ignored our pleas. The county's sitting on hundreds of millions of dollars in, in programming for that. Possibly our new, you know, possibly our new county supervisor will, will, will take, take that up. She just recently contacted me and wants to meet with me. And why me? I don't know. But I'm going to bring, when I, when I speak with her, I'm, I'm going to bring that, that up. The county needs to be engaged. But in the meantime, I think, I would, I would like to see a, a committee formed.
Well, we can do that right now. Would you, would you like to be on the subcommittee with, with Mark?
I, I've spoken on it, but could I?
Yeah, sure.
Add to that. Yeah, I, I concur with your comments on, on the need to do something and with my colleague Enmeyer. I'd like to be on that, that subcommittee. Something I think is important. We may have different views, but I think there is a solution in there somewhere. And I, I thought this would be raised later on at, at the discussion on commissions and committees, but I, I would be willing to work on that. I think it's an important issue.
Is that fine with you, Jay?
Yeah, that's, that's absolutely fine with me.
So, the committee of, of Councilmember Cabral and Councilmember Enmeyer on, on homelessness. And, yeah, I mean, look, I got the article, we got the article in the San Clemente Times. It's one of my, one of my top priorities. I want to see us make progress. Everybody, I think, no matter where you stand on this, you don't want homeless people out on the streets in San Clemente, right? For, for different reasons perhaps, but, but we all want the same thing. We can get progress, but we don't have the resources to do this by ourselves. We just don't. And so, what we need to do is pressure those that do to create that shelter in, in a location that is feasible. I'm saying county, unincorporated land that's in our South County spa. And that's, let's work on that. So...
And there is much that's being done in that regard. Steve spoke to that in the past about some of the efforts in, in the county to do that. And it's just pulling all those resources together, talking to the different community interests and, and see what we can come up with.
Yeah. And I think the county now is interested. I, I spoke with Supervisor Foley Sunday and she indicated it was a priority for her and she looked forward to working with us to address the homeless issue in terms of regional facilities. I, I think the county now has some focus, Chris.
Sure. Yeah, great. And, and we will pull our weight and we'll do what we can, but we can't do it all on our own. So, let's go with that. We've got the subcommittee formed. Any other comments on?
Well, what, what about including members of the community on, on, on this community, on this commission or committee, sorry?
Mayor, could I?
Yeah.
Before you get to that, thank you. I want you to discuss it. If you appoint members to the committee besides the two members- If you appoint members to the committee besides the two members of the council, it becomes a Brown Act committee unless they're invited in on an occasional or periodic basis.
Okay, let's keep it informal then, and we'll let the subcommittee members talk to who they think might be good resources.
They can bring people in ad hoc, and then it's not, it doesn't need to be noticed in the agenda.
Okay. Thank you. City Attorney Smith, any other comments on homelessness? No? Okay. Guermina, thank you for your time. We're going to miss you. Yes, appreciate your efforts on behalf of the city. Thank you. All right. Okay, moving to our next item. We are introducing our new chief of our San Clemente Police Services, Jay Christian. Thank you. And I'll make an introduction here for Jay, but I do want to say it's with sort of special appreciation that I welcome Jay as a fellow to leg a dad. And it's great to have a San Clemente resident leading our sheriff's deputies and our police services and really honored and happy to have you coming on, Jay. So here, I'm going to do my formal announcement here. Okay, I'm pleased to introduce to you Captain Jay Christian, San Clemente's new chief of police services. Captain Christian has been a member of the Orange County Sheriff's Department since 1997. Jay and his wife Natalie, Nathalie?
Natalie.
Natalie, and their two children are proud residents of San Clemente. Captain Christian has proudly served OCSD in a variety of assignments over his 25-year law enforcement career, including stints as lieutenant of custody operations at Central Jail, sergeant of international, of internal affairs in the professional standards division, sergeant of investigations in the north operations division, investigator at San Clemente Police Services, and as an investigator in the homicide detail of OCSD's Criminal Investigations Bureau. As chief of police services, he manages patrol operations, investigations, traffic enforcement, school resource officer, and other administrative duties. On behalf of my colleagues, I want to extend my deepest appreciation to Captain Benfield for his dedication and capable leadership while serving as our city's chief of police services for the past two and a half years, and congratulate him on his exciting new role as commander of the sheriff's investigation division. So he got a big promotion. We're pleased to welcome Captain Christian to serve our community. We're confident that since he has previously served as an OCSD investigator in San Clemente and has lived with his family for the past eight years here, Jay will assimilate local knowledge and serve our, which we need a lot of, right? That's really going to go a long way in San Clemente, and serve our community well for many years to come, hopefully. Finally, on behalf of my council colleagues, I want to thank Sheriff Don Barnes for allowing the city council to interview top candidates for this important assignment and for taking our wishes into consideration before making this appointment. Welcome aboard, Jay. Let's go up and welcome.
Now we got to end it. That's right. Well, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, city staff, and members of the public, thank you very much for that warm introduction. I'm absolutely honored and humbled to be selected as the new city chief here in San Clemente. I look forward to leading what I think is a great professional staff in serving your law enforcement needs. As, on behalf of Sheriff Barnes, I look forward to utilizing the different resources we have in the department to address our law enforcement needs and our quality of life issues that are so very important to us here in San Clemente. And like the mayor said, one of the unique qualities I have, and it's unique in the fact that no other contract service that we provide has a chief that is also a member of the community they serve. So I look forward to that. I feel like it gives me some insight as to our issues here in town. And my door is always open. My phone number is listed on the city website. Please reach out. I'd love to hear your concerns. It is a two-way street, and I provide, excuse me, I depend on you guys, just as you depend on us, to provide law enforcement service. We need to know what the issues are. If you have concerns, please let us know, and we're here for you guys. Thank you very much.
Do you do a presentation?
Okay. Yeah. Oh, yeah, let's do a picture.
Hey, if I could just say one thing about Captain Christian. Invited him to Rotary Club today, and he came, he interacted with the Rotary Club, and I didn't convince him to become a Rotarian, but nonetheless, what a great ambassador he is for law enforcement, for OCSD. I just want to say that. I was so amazed, I was so impressed with him today.
Great. Thank you, Jay. And maybe he'll get to the coffee chat at the San Clemente Times. CJ?
I wouldn't do that.
Want to have, we have the council members up here. It came to our attention that we have some national champions here in San Clemente. If you haven't heard, yeah, we have three members of the NCAA women's soccer, some call it football, soccer national championship. Here's two of them right here. Oh, thank you. And while this is special to me, I was a soccer player growing up, and my son plays soccer and is really, really popular, of course, in San Clemente. So it's so terrific that we have you here, both of you ladies here as residents. And we're missing?
Brianna.
Brianna, okay. So we've got three. We've got Lauren Briskie. Did I pronounce that right?
Perfect.
All right. We have Maddie DeCiano?
Yes.
Okay. And we have Brianna Riley, the one with the easy name didn't come. All right, so UCLA defeated the University of North Carolina, pretty good school, on December 5th to win the national championship after coming back from a tool-goal deficit and winning in double overtime, three to two. Oh, the comeback is considered the greatest in women's college soccer history. UCLA women's team, must have been a mom who wrote that. UCLA women's soccer team had a 22-2 season. UCLA beat North Carolina earlier in the preseason back in September, and then they, and held the number-one ranking in college soccer for nine straight weeks. So the national championship is the 120th national championship for UCLA athletics, and it's the second women's national title. So these three players are not done playing though, right? We've got more in our future, is that it? Brianna is taking her fifth year to play at Georgetown while working on a master's degree. Maddie and Lauren were both drafted to play in the National Women's Soccer League, NWSL. Great. And they are part of the 48 players drafted for the, of the 252 players that were eligible. So fantastic, thank you. And Maddie was drafted to the Houston Dash. Lauren is going to the San Diego Wave, right here. Perfect. We can all go watch her play. All right, so I am going to announce your plaques here. Hand these over, then we'll take a nice picture. Okay, this is for Lauren. Whereas Lauren Briskie is a San Clemente resident, and whereas Lauren has competed with the University of California, Los Angeles, women's soccer team, and whereas on September 5th, 2022, Lauren Briskie secured her women's soccer national championship title with the University of California, Los Angeles, over the University of North Carolina in a double overtime 3-2 victory, and whereas Lauren was drafted to the San Diego Wave. And now therefore, I, Chris Duncan, mayor of the city of San Clemente, acting on behalf of the city council and the citizens of San Clemente, do hereby commend San Clemente resident Lauren Briskie for her NCAA women's soccer national championship title. Congratulations, Lauren.
And she's a goalkeeper.
Oh, there we go, the position. Yeah, perfect. All right, and here's Maddie's. Whereas Madeline DeCiano is a San Clemente resident, and whereas Madeline has competed with the University of California, Los Angeles, women's soccer team, and whereas on September 5th, 2022, Madeline DeCiano secured her women's soccer national championship title with the University of California, Los Angeles, over the University of North Carolina in a double overtime 3-2 victory, and whereas Madeline was drafted to the Houston Dash. And now therefore, I, Chris Duncan, mayor of the city of San Clemente, acting on behalf of the city council and the citizens of San Clemente, do hereby commend San Clemente resident Maddie DeCiano for her NCAA women's soccer national champion title. Congratulations, Maddie.
Okay. Want a group picture?
Sure.
Here's the trophy right here.
So we each individually got a mini trophy?
That's the small trophy.
Yeah. The team has a huge trophy.
Syracuse is one.
And what position are you in, man?
Outside back.
Okay. Outside back. Outside forward.
Lauren and I have been playing with each other since we were eight years old, all the way up to now we're 23. Pretty crazy.
All in the same area too, right around here.
Yeah.
Go San Clemente.
Good? Okay.
The important one.
This one goes in the paper.
Sweet, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, guys. I can take first.
Okay. Thank you, ladies, and thanks everybody for coming and making San Clemente look good. All right, oral communications, part one, is next on the agenda.
First speaker is Amanda Q., followed by Susie Whitelaw.
I think I have a presentation, please, if that could be queued up. Oh, is it on the screens? Or for city council?
Screens again.
Okay.
Oh, we have a presentation?
Yeah.
Okay.
I could let the speaker go up or?
Are you back there?
Or do you want me to just, well, the city council members can't see it, though, that's a problem. Or do you want the other?
Do we have a, oh, here we go.
Oh, there we go. Thank you. Thank you. Excuse me. Welcome back, everybody. Happy New Year. So the next slide, please. So as a San Clemente resident of over 50 years, I'm really concerned regarding what kind of properties could be lost regarding eminent, through eminent domain or squire rights or right-of-way. Next slide, please. That was the burger stop that was lost. In a conversation that I had with HOV, with the OCTA, they did mention that they could study having a center lane like this one that was a simulation from a San Clemente resident. Next slide, please. And the reason why I'm bringing this up is that, next slide, please, that at a recent San Clemente Times meeting, a representative from the San Clemente Historical Society mentioned that a, the Caltrans reached out to them to find out what properties, historical properties along the I-5 could be basically damaged or would be expanded or would be possibly taken down because of this eminent domain. So there's a concern here of what is going to be happening to our town. So in 2019, the OCTA did a study which had mentioned that there, they already had located that there was eight properties that could be taken away, eight residential properties and one commercial business, and temporary construction easements in nine parcels. And I don't know, I need to do a PRA to find out what parcels they are already, Caltrans or OCTA is already looking into or have looked into. And so it's concerning that when I've spoken to the OCTA representatives, that they've mentioned, that they don't know, you know, what properties can be taken. It's my understanding that the HOV improvements did not call for the expansion of the I-5 freeway. Next slide, please. This is from a presentation that Kia Mardesavi, the traffic engineer from the OCTA, presented to our city. And, next slide, please. There's notes underneath that. The part of this, this is OCTA's PowerPoint presentation, it says that HOV 2-plus lanes does not meet federal standard due to overuse. Then HOV 3-plus lanes meet federal standard but underused. Then express tolls meet federal standard and doubles use compared to HOV lanes 3-plus. Next slide, please. So when looking into the notes, it said, "When considering how managed lanes will operate in 2040, we see that HOV 2-plus policy will continue failing to meet the standard first column. As a result, two operational alternatives were analyzed in the development of the LRTP." So basically, there's no need for a expansion of the freeway and HOV lanes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I know it's unusual, Mayor, but I would mention that our own Zach Pontson shared with me recently of OCTA's intention to host, to make a public presentation here in the next couple of months, I believe in April, as a tentative date to revisit this item and make the community aware, the council, of what its current plans are and engage with the community in the very near future.
Do we have a date certain on that? April, the?
I was typing out the question. I can see you from here, Zach, if only barely. First meeting of May.
Okay, for those.
Or May. May.
For those that, ish, that couldn't hear, yeah, I mean, that, so OCTA is going to give a briefing to San Clemente that outlines some more and provides some more detail on what their plans are regarding the I-5 expansion. So we'll all have a chance to participate in that and hear straight from OCTA what they're looking at, what the timetable is and all of that. And that's going to be our first meeting in May, 2023.
One of the May meetings.
Okay, one of the May meetings, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have one thing to quiz the city attorney on. City attorney, one of the things that comes up is the fact that in our cooperative agreement with the county and OCTA, we only agreed, am I correct? We only agreed to cooperate with an HOV lane. We never agreed to cooperate, cooperate to widen the I-5 by one inch. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. We did not sign on to any configuration of that widening, or of that project.
I think that's important for people to know.
Sorry. No, that is important to know, and it's also important that OCTA has not made any decisions about whether they're going to expand or anything. So that's what, that's what they're wanting to hear from us about in May, and we'll have that chance to provide that community input. So thank you for, thank you for that important topic.
We were briefed earlier this week, we were at a briefing where they did mention to all the new city council members that they had plans for a, this freeway, Port of the freeway in San Clemente. They didn't say specifically, but they're in the planning process and they're doing something, and it sounded more than less.
Yes, well, they have, they're looking at all options. I think that's probably fair to say, and there may be some advantages for them to expand the footprint, but that doesn't mean that works for us, right? So we'll have that chance to explain to them why that doesn't, that may not work for San Clemente, so. Okay, cool.
Good evening. My name is Susie Wall, Susie Whitelaw. I have a PhD.
They're part of the problem, but they could be a very critical part of the solution. And we need more than sand replenishment. We need sand retention structures such as groynes and artificial reefs. The city has an ongoing project funded by the Coastal Commission to conduct a feasibility study for nature-based solutions. The Coastal Commission considers artificial reefs to be a nature-based solution, but not unfortunately groynes. So we are calling on the city to prioritize this technology in the current study and prepare a feasibility design for an artificial reef that could not only halt coastal erosion, but could potentially create a new surf break. Save Our Beaches is also exploring other innovative methods, including shallow near-shore dredging, sometimes called rainbowing, and opportunistic replenishment by having the railroad bring in sand, maybe from Mexico, and side dump sand from their rail cars instead of rock. We also believe that the city needs a full-time employee to oversee these coastal issues. We've sent an email to each of the council members with a list of the critical stack... the task for that position. And for more information about our organization, you can go to www/saveourbeachessc.org. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I was going to be addressing... I was going to be addressing this issue during council comments, but her point seemed to be addressing what I was going to bring up. Shall we hold that discussion, or is it... would it be appropriate to get into that now?
Whichever you prefer, but it might be better to wait... Yeah, that way we can get through our comments. Okay. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Sharon Gecko, followed by Tawny Burns.
Sharon Gecko, 30-year resident, current RSVP coordinator. I have a simple request. I ride my bike here every so often. The bike lane on Pico heading west ends abruptly between Del Cerro and Frontera Presidio. Is there a way that you can put a cutout in the sidewalk so once the bike lane ends, we can jump onto the sidewalk? Because with the new law, with cars have to move over a lane, it's a safety issue for me riding my bike and then for all the cars that have to change lanes. Simple request. I don't know. Would that be possible?
Well, we don't get in the business of responding to comments, but just to make this editorial, we are looking at that with our Public Works folks right now in terms of the redesign there, and so...
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. So we're looking at that. Thank you.
Tawny Burns, followed by Susan Ambrose.
Hello. Can you hear me? My name is Tawny Burns, and I'd like to congratulate the new City Council members. I am hopeful that every City Council member will do what is right for our city. I am here to address two City Council members in particular. Mr. Steve Noblock, I have one request for you. I too am a Christian, and I would like to ask you to please leave religion and your views on abortion out of city business. Our country is already divided. Please don't do that to the city of San Clemente. Now, on a more important subject. Chris Duncan, you are now our mayor and represent the City Council along with the citizens of San Clemente. I would like to ask you a question. Have you ever apologized to the men and women of the Orange County Sheriff's Department for your lack of support? I have a photo on my phone of you participating in the BLM rally when two Orange County sheriffs shot and killed a black man. You didn't even wait for the investigation to be complete. As a matter of fact, the investigation was barely underway before you cast judgment on the actions that were taken. Do you understand the emotional stress those two deputies were under? I think they needed and deserved your support and fairness, not your virtuous snap judgment. This was near the time of the superhyped George Floyd incident. You had time to think about attending that BLM rally, whether or not it was the right thing to do. However, those two deputies that you were casting judgment on had one second to make a life-changing decision. I know firsthand what it is like. I married into a law enforcement family, and my husband served 30 years in a nearby city. I am very familiar with the honorable character and intentions of 99% of the law enforcement community. I am also the daughter of a black man. Yes, I am half-black. My birth certificate says that my father is Negro. What does that say about the year I was born? So I have a lot to say about racism in America and the enormous stress police officers are under. I am disgusted on how politicians continue to use... no, wait, abuse the race issue in these modern times. So I take offense to your actions in many ways. Please stop dividing and try uniting this community. With that, I want to give you the opportunity, as a mayor, our mayor, to publicly apologize to the men and women of the Orange County Sheriff's Department for your lack of support and rushed to judgment before all of the facts were in. You will see me here periodically at City Council meetings, and I hope that a public apology will be made to the brave men and women who protect us. Let me remind you, all lives matter.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just make a brief response since I was addressed in those comments. The comment was made about abortion. I brought before this council a resolution declaring San Clemente a sanctuary city because I thought that the 65 million aborted children in this country was abominable. And Proposition 1, which the legislature put on the ballot, which the state elected, voted on during our last election, allowed the taking of a human life clear up to the moment of birth. I thought that was atrocious. So in addressing the comments, I will not apologize and to suggest that that issue is one that doesn't belong at the local level. It belongs at every level of government, and I will remain steadfast in my position and will not apologize for anything that I've done with this council. Thank you.
Okay. Next speaker.
Great. Good evening, City Council members.
Please speak up, Susie.
Good evening, City Council members, and welcome back. Councilman James, it's good to have you back on the dais.
Thank you.
And I am here to talk about the California King tides coming to visit us again this weekend, Saturday and Sunday. They're going to be good times to visit from 7:00 in the morning. Will be some low tides and some high tides. I will get the title information to Beaches, Parks, and Recreation for distribution to you tomorrow morning. And so that's a good thing to look for. I'd also like to invite the public, like I did last month when we had these California tides in December, that the state is asking for people, local people, to take photographs of sea level rise when they see it coming and when they have those times to go down and look at the waters and try to place themselves in front of a backdrop of either cliffs or bluffs or the back hills or the dunes or infrastructure, et cetera, so they can see the actual rise marks on the terrain or on the infrastructure building. That would be showing the amount of growth, the amount of height that the waves are coming. And we can record these. We're going to be part of a statewide science project that we will be using this information. The state will be using it with their science teams, their engineers, to further plan options and share strategies that we can use to protect ourselves from erosion, to do some of the things that Susie was up here talking about from Save Our Beaches, and I'm so glad she was here this evening. And the things and strategies are so important for each of our beaches that need it, and most of them do. So I call on you to help get the public out and encourage them and go down yourselves when you see the times that are convenient for your families and yourselves and pass on the news to others who may want to experience the seeing the sea level rise and seeing these huge waves come in, as well as seeing the low tides with the tide pools being exposed. So it's a great thing to look at, and it's a great thing to plan for when we're planning on how to retreat our beaches and build them back up. Thank you very much. And by the way, I am the former chairperson of the Coastal Advisory Committee, which I served on for about 11 and a half years, and I now am a commissioner with Beaches, Parks, and Recreation. However, I am up here as a resident who's been coastal afflicted for a very long time. Thank you very much. I appreciate your involvement in this very important issue.
Thank you, Susie.
That's all for oral communications. Next up is a motion to waive reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances.
Make a motion that we waive the reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances?
Second.
Okay. It's motion is Noblock. Second is James. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Consideration of agendizing items requiring immediate attention.
Any items?
Yeah. I have one item, if I could. I would like to... Actually, this item is for this requiring immediate action. I'll save my motion for the end. I... I take that back.
Okay. Seeing no others, we can move on.
Close session. Report, City Attorney.
Yes, Mayor and Council. The council took the following reportable action in closed session. On the first item, the council authorized the city manager to enter into a city manager's services agreement with Hanson Bridges to provide special counsel services in City VTCA, the action that's listed there. In the second item, the council voted to waive privilege on noise study relating to activities at San Gregorio Park by urban crossroads. That document's available by request to the city clerk. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. And we are... go ahead. We're moving on to the consent calendar.
Yes. I have a member of the public polled item 6A1.
And is that the only... that's the only one that the member of public has polled?
Correct.
Council members, anyone wanting to pull any other items off the consent calendar?
Moved it to...
Hold on.
8A.
Oh, wait. 6...
8A1, I think.
6A1?
6A1? Where...
I'm looking at...
You got 6A1.
So it would be under 6, just item 6. A, B, C, up through...
I would like to pull H, 6H.
Okay. Councilmember Cabral, any...
The trolley matter. What is that?
That's item 8A.
That is not on the consent calendar, so we're good there. Okay. So we have 6A1. We have 6H. Any others?
Motion to move the balance. Second.
Okay. Motion to move the balance is James. Second is Noblock. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay. It's unanimous.
Item 6A1, Amanda Q.
I have a presentation, please. Actually, it's the same one that I did, but with some modifications. Next slide, please. So at the last City Council meeting, I brought up an opinion regarding Attorney General Kamala Harris regarding abstentions. Next slide, please. And basically, what was pertinent in this vote for Mayor Pro Tem was members who abstained by choice are deemed to acquiesce on the resolution reached by council, meaning that council decisions will require majority support only from members who actually cast votes, not from those entitled to vote. Next slide, please. It's really important to hear regarding Judge Dave Rosenberg mentions this type of scenario regarding the vote of Mayor Pro Tem, which was a two yes, one no, and two abstention. And the reason why I'm saying this is that it's really concerning that what happened...
Two yes, one no, one no vote and two abstain. Two yes, one no, and two abstain. Does that pass? Does that motion pass, or does that motion fail? Well, first of all, we do have a quorum. Everyone's there. You have two yeses, one no, and two extensions. So that's clearly a quorum. You look to the rules of the body, by the way, to determine what a quorum is. Normally, the rules of the body will say that a majority is a quorum. So for a five-member body, three members are a quorum. If you have three members, you can do business. But does it have sufficient votes to pass? The answer is yes. The motion passes on a vote of two yes, one no, and two abstain. Why is that? Because the abstain votes count for purposes of a quorum. When you're counting, do you have a quorum? However, for purposes of the vote, it's like they never voted. You don't count them for the vote. And so if you consider that they never voted, the vote is two yes and one no. It passes. Now, let's take a vote of two yes...
Okay. Sorry. That was the long version. Next slide, please. So it's basically what he stated, that it does pass a two, one, two passes, vote passes. And my concern was that at the City Council meeting of that date, a couple things went wrong. One, that Mayor Duncan stated there wasn't a quorum. There was a quorum. Then the city attorney mentioned that they needed three votes, and that's not true. All that was needed was two yeses. So therefore, actually, it should be that Victor Cabral should be Mayor Pro Tem. So I think that's all I have. Next slide, please, and that's it. Thank you.
There's no discussion. I'll move staff truck recommendation on 6A1.
I'd like to... I'd like to make a motion that we have a new election for Mayor Pro Tem.
You want to explain the basis for your motion?
I'll explain it if it's called for, but I'd like to agendize a new election for Mayor Pro Tem.
I don't think you can get into discussion on it.
Not... well, it is... yeah, I mean, it's before us, right? So we can discuss the item.
There are two options. One is to discuss it under tonight's agenda. The second option is to make a motion with regard to a future agenda and just posting it as it's been described. So you can either discuss it under this guise or make a motion of one, two, or three of you to discuss it at a future meeting.
Okay. So the motion would be to discuss it and to discuss whether we have a revote at a new...
The council has the ability to elect and reelect its officers anytime. So the motion's in order, either as part of this item or as a standalone future agenda item.
We...
There are two motions, neither with a second, just that's where you stand right now.
I believe that...
Oh, did Steve's have a second?
Cabral's motion was seconded by James.
Okay.
Was my motion not seconded? I don't believe it was. I'll make a substitute motion. And my substitute motion is that we prove item 6A1. I think as a council, as the city attorney mentioned, the members of the leadership of this council are selected by this council and can be selected at any time. If there's confusion about the Roberts Rules of Order or the other various rules of order at election time when the leadership is being selected, I would request, as part of my motion, that that discussion take place prior to the next meeting when... next year when those selections are being made, so that there's no confusion at the time. So with that, I'll move approval of...
I don't think you can get into discussion on it.
Not, well, it is, yeah, I mean, it's before us, right? So we can, we can discuss the item.
There are two options. One is to discuss it under tonight's agenda. The second option is to make a motion with regard to a future agenda and just posting it as it's been described. So you can either discuss it under this guise, or make a motion of one, two, or three of you to discuss it at a future meeting.
Okay, so the motion would be to discuss it, to discuss whether we have a revote at a new...
The council has the ability to elect and reelect its officers anytime. So the motion's in order, either as part of this item or as a standalone future agenda item. There are two motions, neither with a second, just that's where you stand right now.
I believe that...
Oh, did Steve's have a?
Cabral's motion was seconded by James.
Was my motion not seconded? I don't believe it was. I made a substitute motion. And my substitute motion is that we prove item 6A1. I think as a council, as the city attorney mentioned, the members of, the leadership of this council are selected by this council and can be selected at any time. If there's confusion about the Roberts Rules of Order or the other various rules of order at election time when the leadership is being selected, I would request, as part of my motion, that that discussion, that that discussion take place prior to the next meeting, when, next year, when those selections are being made, so that there's no confusion at the time. So with that, I'll move approval of staff recommendation on 6A1.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion, and we have a second for discussion at our next meeting. Regardless of what that, where that motion goes, we still have a motion on the table, a motion and a second to, you know, to discuss it at our next meeting. I don't want to speak for you, but...
Yeah, yeah. No, we have a motion to have a, the election at the next meeting, and it's been seconded.
And it's been seconded.
And I think it only takes two votes.
Well, we have two competing motions. Let's see, before we get to them, I, we did not, we weren't able to cover this because Councilmember James wasn't here at the last meeting, if I recall, and it was his point of order. That's why we have it here. It appears to me that there is some confusion in the public about whether the vote was done correctly. You know, with that being the case, to eliminate the confusion, I could support a motion to discuss this at the next meeting, and then we can decide where we go from there. I cannot, I could not support a motion to, to go ahead and have, have the revote right now. I would like to...
I'm saying about having a revote now, I'm saying next. You just have a revote next election. I think, I don't know that we need more than two to agendize it.
Okay. I guess it's maybe the same thing. If we can have the vote at any time, then we can discuss why we're having the vote, I guess, at the next meeting.
Right. And at the end of the day, two of you can put anything on a future agenda.
Okay. All right.
Without staff analysis, but you've got a lot of analysis.
Okay, so we have the...
That can be done, that can be done at any time. We have before us what the action that took place in December, where three council members voted in favor of me as Mayor Pro Tem. My substitute motion, which should be heard first, is to, is to approve staff recommendation 6A1. That's an action that can be done by itself, and at the next meeting, we can discuss a new, new election if the council wants to have a new election. Or at least to discuss the, the rules of the protocol for the election. If that's part of the motion, I'm not sure if...
I think we have two options. We either talk about it and potentially vote at the next meeting, or we don't. Your motion is that we don't.
No, no, I have no problem with, with the, with the prior motion of consideration. Any two members can agendize at any time the selection of council, of any leadership position. So if that, if someone wants to do that at the next meeting, that's fine. But I don't think we should withhold the election that took place previously, when all five of us were present. That was discussed at the time. The point of order was made by Councilmember James, the city attorney opined on it, and we moved forward. There's been a, a point of order, and the point of order is before us tonight, and...
Okay, so then we do have, we have one to just discuss it next meeting, and it would need to be agendized, I guess, at the next meeting after that. And then we have one to actually go ahead and have the, have a revote at the next. Is that, am I correct?
The second motion made, and Councilmember Cabral can correct me, the substitute motion, so to speak, was to put the election of Mayor Pro Tem on your next agenda. So I'd suggest you vote on that.
No, no, no.
There was reverse order. Reverse order. Victor's motion was approved. My substitute motion was to approve staff recommendation 6A1.
I am misunderstood. I thought your motion came first and then second.
I made a motion, it wasn't seconded.
Oh, got it. Okay, so now, the motion on the floor, then. I've, I've lost the thread. I can't help you without...
All we have is, and this is allowed under our rules, all we have is a motion by Mr. Cabral, a second by me, and that puts it on the agenda, period.
If you don't want to vote on that, then the action can stand as you've described it.
Well, it doesn't require...
Let's have that noted. Is that all right?
That's enough to go on the agenda. Then we don't need to vote on any other motions.
And then substitute motion, or the remaining motion, is by Councilmember Noblock on the item before you. I suggest you deal with that.
Basically, to...
That was seconded by Councilmember...
Yeah, to second, whether to receive that report or, or not.
And that motion was made and seconded and required to vote.
All right, so that's the motion we'll be voting on. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Okay. It is, if the motion passes, it is Duncan, Noblock, and Enmire, and opposed is James and Cabral.
I now need to understand the significance of that vote. I think, I think the public's unclear.
It's crystal clear.
Okay, well, I'm a slow learner. What does that, Mr. City Attorney, what is the significance of this vote?
The significance of the vote on the underlying report, which was the appeal of the point of order, is that the point of order stands as given. What underlied that was two interpretations of the council's election procedures. The first, and the one that, that prevailed with this vote, is that the election of council officers was a round of voting that continues with multiple nominees until each nominee's candidacy has been voted on, or someone receives a vote of the majority of the body. That's the rule that the council just affirmed. The competing understanding, as I understood it, was that the vote for council officers under your rules of procedure is a series of standalone motions to elect a nominee, a single nominee. And as I said, the form of interpretation, the one that's discussed first in our memorandum, was the one that the council just upheld.
I don't want to belabor this point, City Attorney, but what's crystal clear to me is we had a vote under, under Rosenberg's rules that passed. And I am, I am confused on why we're, we're going forward with anything other than having a cure, and that cure would be have a new vote. And I don't understand why anyone would be reluctant to do that.
Well, we are having a new vote. But the vote was just to accept the city attorney's analysis on the point of order, and we have two disagreeing with it, three essentially agreeing with it, but all of that's not really relevant, because we're going to have the vote on the Mayor Pro Tem at the next meeting anyway.
Exactly. There'll be a vote, but until then, the, the action that we took at a previous meeting has been, in effect, certified and approved.
Yeah, okay. All right, we have, we're moving on to 6H. Any public comments?
No public comments.
Okay. Councilmember Enmire, you polled item 6H.
Yes. Yes, I just wanted to point out that with this grant for this funding for the water resources for urban community drought and relief, the city found a way to, if this goes through, find the grant to save a 75% of the cost, which would save the, our city $9,750,000. And I just wanted to applaud the city on that. I'm in favor of it. I just wanted to bring it out. So, thank you.
Fantastic. Okay, you want to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution 23-01 entitled "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California Authorizing the Application for Grant Funds Under the California Department of Water Resources Urban Community Drought Relief Program for the Recycled Water Quality Improvement Project."
Second.
Okay. We have motion by Enmire, second by Noblock. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The, we adopt the resolution. It's unanimous.
Next item on the agenda is public hearings. The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes, and public testimony not to exceed three minutes per speaker. Following closure of the public hearing, the city council will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. First public hearing we have this evening is the annual report concerning the mitigation fee act for fiscal year 2021 to 2022 for the City of San Clemente.
Good evening, Council. My name is Jake Ron, and I'm the Financial Services Officer for the City of San Clemente. Before you tonight is the annual mitigation report, which is required under state law, which addresses various mitigation fees charged by the city. The report includes informations and various exhibits related to the mitigation fees and the uses and the fee levels. Basically, it's all in the report. Staff's recommendation is for council to receive and file the report in accordance with state law.
Thank you, Jake. Do we have any public comments?
We do not.
Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing, close the public hearing. Do we have any discussion or a motion?
I'll move we receive and file the annual report considering the mitigation fee act for fiscal year 2021 and 22, and put it on file with the city clerk.
Second.
All right. Motion is Noblock, second is James. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider the Conley hearing on
Mayor, Councilmember, Calco, Republic Works Director. I have Zach Ponce and our Assistant City Engineer to help me answer questions. I'll have a brief presentation for you. This is the Conley hearing on appeal of administrative, administrative encroachment permit number E22-0112. Next slide, please. A little background, the Conleys reside at 4055 Via Manzana in San Clemente and had been maintaining the city right-of-way in front of 2700,001 Paseo Activo for approximately 30 years. The Arians reside at 27001 Paseo Activo in San Juan Capistrano, and the city limit line runs between these two properties. Next slide. This is a site plan kind of laying out what's going on. The house, all the way to the far left, is Judge Conley's. The yellow area is the area in question. This is the city parkway, and it actually fronts the property at 27001 Paseo Activo, which is where the Arians live. Next slide, please. A timeline of key events. In November of '21, I met with the Conleys on site to assess the issue, and the Arians were present. December 9th, after review of the municipal code and Street and Highways Code, staff determined the maintenance of the city right-of-way should be with the neighboring property owner, the Arians. In January of '22, the Arians removed this landscaping. In May of '22, the Conleys formally applied for and were awarded an administrative encroachment permit to maintain the area, with the understanding that the Arians would be allowed access to their property through this area in the future if needed, and the permit may be revoked at any time. Next slide, please. August of '22, the Arians submitted an AEP application to install walls within the city right-of-way landscaping and lights up to the Conley's property line. In September of '22, the Arians' application was partially approved, with the exception of the walls in the area of the Conley's existing permit. On October 4th, I met with the Arians to discuss their permit application. Next slide. October 26th, the Arians resubmitted an application with a copy of a building permit from the San Juan Capistrano to build a privacy wall on their property. They requested also to install walls within the city right-of-way landscaping and lights up to the Conley's property line. An associated pergola was also proposed to be less than 120 square feet. Therefore, it didn't require a building permit from San Juan Capistrano. November of '22, Arians' permit was verbally approved, and the Conleys were notified in writing that the permit was being revoked, giving them three weeks to remove the landscaping from the area per the signed AEP. Next slide. So we heard a stay of action in December 6th pending hearing of appeal of revocation of the AEP, and, which was agendized for the December 22nd meeting, December 20th meeting. Next slide, please. The city council received and filed the city's report on the summary of the Conley AEP and revocation of the permit at the December 20th council meeting. And per municipal code 17-12-140, a public hearing on an appeal should be held within 30 days of the receipt, oh, excuse me, within 60 days of the receipt of an appeal application, which we're doing tonight. Next slide, please. This is the municipal code that I refer to when making the decision that the Arians ultimately should be responsible for the maintenance of the right-of-way. It's from Chapter 1224 of our municipal code. Next slide. And also from the Street and Highways Code, this is the State Code of California, it essentially says the same thing, that the property owner is to maintain the adjacent property or the parkway in front of their property. Next slide. That's just a continuation of the code. Next slide. And staff recommends that the city council affirm staff's decision revoking the AEP E22-0112. That's the end of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Cabral.
Yeah, I had a question. If you go back to that map, because it was kind of confusing, the picture photograph Is that their, their house?
The house is where you see 4055 Via Manzana, that little partial square or rectangle, all the way to the left.
The Conley house.
That's the, Conley is on the left, and this house, this square is on the right is...
The Arians.
The Arians' house, or is it a?
I believe that's...
ADU.
ADU or a pool house, and they have...
Where is their house?
To the right.
How far?
It's, it's not on this plan, and it's a couple hundred feet away.
A couple hundred feet, okay.
It's a very large piece of property.
I noticed that, this is the only question I have for you, and I did go look at the thing. There is a off-road barrier where the fence is right now. And I understand that the city of San Juan Capistrano isn't concerned about it, but have, are we concerned about them removing that barrier? Do we have any protection for people? Because there was a steep cliff going off that side. I mean, it had to have been put there for a reason.
I think it was, obviously, because of the slope on the, to the north. I don't really think it's needed, to be honest with you. The street kind of goes uphill. It used to be a cul-de-sac, I believe, at one time, and then when the, the area to the right was developed, they added the street onto it. I've looked at it. I think if a car was going fast enough, hit the curb, that, they would be airborne at that point. The, the existing guardrail is not to standard, so it's really not doing much.
Okay.
And it is in San Juan Capistrano.
Jake?
At some point in time, we approved the Conley application. And what changed between, why did we approve it? What changed? And why did we then revoke the, the application?
So...
The approval of the application?
When I originally made the determination in December, that I felt like this property was to be maintained, or was the responsibility of the Arians to maintain, we told both, both property owners that they can file for an AEP to maintain the property. The Conleys filed before the Arians. We didn't know if the Arians were going to, you know, propose anything in the future. We did tell Mr. Conley that this could be revoked at any time. It could be two weeks from now, it could be 20 years from now. We didn't know.
Clear to Judge Conley?
I believe so, yes, sir.
You believe?
It was. It was.
Do we have any idea what the Arians' plans are for that project?
As of right now, it's to build a privacy wall with a pergola, and that's all I can speak of.
Could they develop it beyond that?
They would have to get a permit from City of San Juan Capistrano. I, I'm not really sure how much property they have, and there is a steep slope there.
Any permitting would require the City of San Clemente?
So it's possible they could put an ADU or a garage or something else there, and if that were the case, we would need to grant them a driveway approach, a permit for that.
They would be entitled to access from the road to the property located in San Juan Capistrano?
Yes, sir.
Well, I take exception to that. I don't know that they would be entitled to an access. We could grant it, and that's a discretionary thing. It's not automatic.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, potentially entitled, all right.
Potentially, yeah.
All right, any other questions before we get to the applicant?
I have one question. How tall is that privacy fence that the Arians are planning on putting up? Do you have any idea?
Five feet, I believe.
Five feet.
I believe it's five feet.
Thank you.
And that's driven by San Juan code or our code?
They had to get a building permit from San Juan, because it's... They had to get a building permit from San Juan, because it's actually in the city of San Juan.
Okay, my only question is, if I, to summarize, your opinion is that the city code and the state law require the revocation of the encroachment permit here, because the Arians, not the Conleys, are adjacent to the, to this property?
I believe those codes make it clear that this is the parkway in front of the Arians' property, and it's theirs to maintain.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, let's hear from Judge Conley first. Is that right? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing.
Megan is pulling it up for you.
The PowerPoint is in your packet. It's on page 18. It was, you were given a slightly earlier version of it, but it's basically the same. So I'll go through it fairly rapidly, because you've had a chance, hopefully, to look at it. Next slide, please. This is the city's right-of-way, the area to the left of the redwood fence. To the right is the Arian property in San Juan Capistrano. Next slide, please. There was a discussion about where does the Arian property start and where is their building. This is an aerial which shows. Our house is the upper left on the cul-de-sac, and the Arian pool house is the first block you can see to the right. And then there's a long pool, and then the Arian house itself is up a hill. I would guess that it's approximately 200, 100 yards from that area, the house itself. Next slide, please. I know the Arians are here tonight, and we, you may hear their claim that somehow we have stolen the property. That's not true. This is the way the property looked when we moved in, in October of 1992. The prior owner, who is deceased, so we can't get a statement from him, was maintaining both in front and behind the traffic barrier. We just continued that. It was no big move on our part. Next slide, please. This is the right-of-way before January 4th of 1922, attractive drought-resistant plants, underground irrigation, and so on. Next slide, please. The city's action, though, in December of 2021, based on the, their interpretation of the statutes that you just heard about, we front on the right-of-way, but a small part of it. The Arians front a larger part of it. And the city had a rule of thumb, when there's two competing interests, the one who has the larger frontage wins. That's what was explained to us. Of course, what's different here, and why this should never be a precedent, is city number two is different. So, the city, though, followed their, quote, "normal" rule in this very abnormal situation, and gave them informal permission to maintain it. And what did they do on January 4th? Next slide, please. Took it all back to bare earth. Dump truck arrived with Bobcat, took it down to bare earth. So, things went on. We were meeting with the city, met with the city attorney, met Mr. Cogar, and eventually we were given an encroachment permit. Next slide, please. I'm not sure all the council are familiar with encroachment permits. I was not. It's a formal document. It's signed by multiple people. It's eight pages long, and it's in your packet on page six to take a look at. It's not some casual little card that was handed out at the front desk. And that was reaffirmed by Mr. Cogar on October 11th, where he said to me in an email, "Your permit is still intact. We're going to allow the Arians to do some others, some other construction past your area, but your is still intact." Now, we were never told that if the Arians decided to build something, you would lose your, your encroachment permit. We were told, I agree, that it was up to the city. The city could evaluate it. We had no guarantees, but not like, oh, if someone comes in with a, with an idea to build something, you would lose. And it's pretty obvious we didn't think it that way, because we spent $11,000 improving this, not thinking that our neighbors, who we don't get along with, honestly, could just come in and erase it. So why was it revoked? It was summarily revoked, by the way, with no warning, no hearing, no notice, nothing. Boom! 5:30 at night, email comes out from the city, "Your, your permit is revoked. Get everything out of there in three weeks, or else. We'll do it, and we'll bill you." That's a very aggressive way to handle somebody who's been in the city for 30 years. So it's revoked six months after it's issued, five weeks after Mr. Cogar says it's still intact. And why is it being revoked? Because of proposed changes in the Arians. It's revoked despite our $11,000 worth of improvements. You might think that's a little high, but there's stuff underground, like lighting lines and irrigation. And it was revoked with the shortest notice that the, that the permit allows, three weeks. Imagine yourself being told that you had to clear out your front yard in three weeks, or else the city would do it and bill you. Next slide, please. I've covered that. Next slide, please. So what are the proposed improvements the Arians are talking about? A pergola. And where is this pergola going to be? The very far end of their lot, the very far western end, probably 100 yards from the front door, down at the bottom of their sloped property, which has no view of the ocean, some view of the valley. Why would they do that? Well, we think it's because their real goal is to build an ADU, and they want to free up the access in the front. And they admitted that in a, in a hearing in front of the San Juan City Planning Commission on April 13th of 2022. So, we are to level the whole thing, because they may build a pergola there. Now, you can buy a pergola, I checked, at Lowe's and Home Depot for under $500. It's not a big deal. But we have to rip everything out, because there, they would like to put a pergola there. Well, okay. They may never build a pergola. Their real aim is an ADU. It would have a big impact on our, on our lot. And the other, the logic of it, they want to build a walkway. It's three feet wide. So, Conleys, erase everything in the 40-foot right-of-way. Does that make sense? What are the people in the planning department thinking? We have neighbors who will be in support of us, and we have signatures that we'll submit at the end of the hearing. Next slide, please. Do the Arians need, they're landlocked. They need access. Is it some kind of situation where somehow their, their property, they can't get to it? Look at that, and we have also, if you want to see the large blow-up. All you have to do to reach the area of the pergola is walk down the sidewalk, assuming you don't want to walk on your own property. You think it's more convenient to walk down the sidewalk. Walk down the sidewalk, see where the little fence is, turn right, turn left, and you're there. So, it's a make-believe need. So, this decision makes no sense. Strip everything back to bare earth. And will there ever be a pergola? It's an odd place to put a pergola when you have a view, a lot, going up to excellent views to very poor views. And we strongly urge that the council rescind the revocation. It makes no sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we ask Judge Conley some questions? Oh. Yeah, the, would now be appropriate time to ask questions before we get to other comments. Okay. Judge Conley?
We have a couple of other speakers.
Uh, do you want to ask the judge questions first?
I want to ask the judge questions, please.
Will I go to the mic?
Sure.
Judge Conley, this pergola, how close to your property line does this pergola come?
It would be about to the property line. Oh, it's right next to the property line.
Right on your property line?
Yes.
And how close to your front door?
1015 feet. So it has big impact on our house, and it's 100 yards away from their house, except their pool house is a little closer.
Judge, if you can stay there just for one moment. Mr. Cogar, is it allowed to put a pergola right on the property line? Do you have to have a five-foot setback? What's, what's the story there?
Just from looking at the site plan, I think it's, I want to say it's about 10 feet from, back from the property line, so.
The plan, the.
The pergola, yes, sir.
The Arians have provided you, it's 10 feet.
It looks about 10 feet away from their, their property line, on their property.
Judge, that sounds.
That doesn't sound correct to me.
Okay. Okay, sir, thank you. That's all.
I have one question for you, Judge. Have you asked the Arians not to do this, because it doesn't make any sense? Have you pled with them to, to listen to reason and not do this, because it makes a heck of a lot more sense, regardless of what the codes say, for you to have that property than for them? Have you asked them?
I have not asked them. We're not on speaking terms, to be honest with you.
Chris, I do have another question. Have you thought about engaging a mediator with this, between you and the Arians?
Well, I would say.
Probably used a lot of mediators in your day.
Everything is in concrete at this point.
Got it. Okay.
We've kind of given up. We've had attorneys. Our attorneys have tried to deal with it. You're going to hear from our attorney, Bill Beggar, in a moment.
Okay.
It's just locked in concrete.
Okay.
But the point is, is the city being fair?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, sir.
Are these other speakers part of their 10-minute presentation? Is that how this works?
So, no. Next, we will invite up one of the Arians to speak for 10 minutes, one of the other property owners. We have cards for Mitchell and Arlene. One of those two individuals will be given 10 minutes. Every other speaker gets three minutes.
I see. Okay.
So either Mitchell or Arlene, whoever would like to represent themselves as the property owner for 10 minutes.
Do you want anything?
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Arlene Arian. I didn't know that I would have, one of us would have 10 minutes.
If I could just, the representative of the competing ownership, whether that's you, or the other speaker, or both of you, have 10 minutes total.
Up to 10 minutes.
Up to 10 minutes. You don't have to use it, but.
So, I'm sorry, both of us have up to 10 minutes?
You can share the 10 minutes any way you see fit.
Or share the 10 minutes. Okay. Oh, could he come up as well simultaneously?
No, you can go in sequence, and.
Sequence, then.
Right. And then the other speakers get three minutes.
Thank you.
But the property owner's representative, and the appellant's representative, whoever that is, gets 10 minutes.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Thank you. He could go first, and?
Yes, yes.
Yes, he can go first, yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And I do have to say this, even though it's off-topic, thank you for standing up for the unborn. That's really important, and I just had to say that. Okay. Arlene and I live in San Juan Capistrano and San Clemente. Our properties process both borders. We pay taxes to both cities. And, you know, and that was not by design. That's just the way the lot was carved out. We are directly behind and adjacent to the area that's in question. Now, the Conleys have controlled, lived there for 30 years. We have lived there for 27 years. So we moved in a couple of years after they did. When we moved in, there was a boundary already set just to the east of that guardrail. And so it's our guardrail there, so we didn't think that that was our property. You know, that we, you know, had no reason to think we have a large parcel of property, so we never understood that that was our property until, until, and a situation came up where they tried to sell the property, and my son-in-law noticed that it was, in fact, the boundary line was, was much further south, or west on that. Okay? There is, you can see, there was a boundary marker that was placed there. And I question, you know, why would the Conleys put a boundary marker, you know, a false boundary marker that is not part of their property? In the years that we were there, they never came to us and said, hey, can we use part of your property, or can we do this? Never, there was never anything stated to us like that. They just, they just used it. Okay. Can I go to Slide B now? Okay, now, this is generally, you can see the breakdown of our property. Our Arian's property is in blue, Conley's property is in red. When Zach and Kyle came from the, from the city to look at the property, they gave us a sheet that delineated the, the public access way, the normal way that you would delineate right-angle properties, and how you would divide that. And I have a copy of it right here. This is, this is the actual piece that he gave, and it's got the line drawn exactly where we have the arrow pointed there. This is the normal and proper way to divide property between two right-angle lots. Can we go to Slide C? Now, Slide C, as you can see, that the ADP that was given to the Conleys is, is in the red area there. And he, you know, a major point of what he was, he stated in, that a reason that he should get the ADP is because he's got adjacency to it. I got to tell you, how much adjacency is there, if you're really looking at it? There's really none. It's a point. We have 38 feet of adjacency to that, that parcel. Also, if you want to, and here's a question. What, what if we were to take, ask for the, a similar AEP in front of their property? Can I go to Slide D now? That's what it would look like. Now, would we do that? No. That's ridiculous. And we wouldn't even think of doing that, because it's just not right. It's not in front of the property that we own. But we would have just as much adjacency to do that as, as what he has given. Mr. Conley also mentioned that, oh, you know, the fence, we can just walk around it. How is it that a neighbor should dictate what we, and what kind of entrance and everything we should have on our own property? If, in fact, Sharon Conley said that, oh, you can just walk around. You can just walk around the fence there. Well, let's go to Slide E. I have to say, would the Conleys allow us to put a fence in front of their property and say, oh, you can just walk around? This is, should they be able to dictate how we approach and access our property? This is, should they be able to dictate how we approach and access our property? And a couple of other things. He made the mention that we're not, they got a build, you know, that's a ruse or something. I've got plans, receipts, and quotes for building materials and everything, detailed plans, all here that I'd be glad to show you if that was a concern of anyone here. I'm not right here.
Let's, ma'am, if we could just pause for a minute. Laurel, stop the clock. We just need to be clear up front about who gets what time before you, just so it's allocated equally.
Mm-hmm.
We need to confirm with the Conleys whether Mrs. Conley also intended to speak or whether her time was included in the time taken, the 10 minutes given previously.
I don't know.
It was 10 exactly.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah.
She was going to speak separately.
It's three minutes.
Yeah, if that's the case, then what we wanted to tell you two is that there's three minutes remaining on the 10, and then you could have three more minutes, as will the Conleys, to speak separately.
So I have three minutes?
There's six minutes left.
You have time on the clock.
Yeah.
You have time on the clock for the 10. Your wife has three minutes after that.
A separate opportunity.
Okay.
And then the same will be
If you walk away, you're done with your first 10.
Oh, if you walk away. Can I, I can't speak.
Yes, you have three minutes of his time?
Three plus three.
Plus three of your own.
I have three plus three.
Yeah, and then we'll allow
I'll take the three plus three.
Okay. Is that all right? Then we'll allow Mrs. Conley to use her three.
That's fine, yes. Please go ahead.
So I have three plus three, that's six, so till 7:47.
I'll let you know when
Sure, let you know when the first three is over.
Please go ahead.
Okay, so six minutes. Thank you so much, gentlemen, for the opportunity to have a voice tonight. Councilmember James, glad to see that you're here.
Thank you.
And you're well. Thank you. First, I'd like to address some of the things that Judge Conley said, that, first of all, he signed an AEP. He is a judge, he is a lawyer. He knew the terms of what he was signing. So he knew that it could be revoked at any time. He knew that it could happen in two to three weeks' notice from the city. He took a risk in expending what he did, but he knew what he was getting into, I believe so, as a judge and lawyer, when he read and signed that AEP. So the things that he was saying and how much he expended, that was at his own risk because he went into this permit informed of that. When he said he laid to bare earth, and he showed that slide, as my husband pointed out, a false boundary line was placed there. And that whole entire area was possessed and controlled and developed by Judge Conley and his wife, which was our property for nearly 30 years. After much attorney involvement, a new fence they constructed was far further west, which was the actual true boundary line. So that entire area was removed from our control. That's why it's taken us, gentlemen, 27-plus years to even seek a building permit because we didn't realize that property was ours, because it was misrepresented for that many decades. So when we laid to bare earth, what we did, it was all the improvements that Judge Conley and his wife built on our private property. They refused to remove their improvements from our private property, even though they said through their attorney that they would. I have it all, everything that's said is documented and gone back and forth between our attorneys. Because he refused to remove it, we had to remove it because we paid taxes and insurance on that property and we would be responsible if anything happened on our property with the improvements that they had placed there. So we had to remove what they would not remove. He called the sheriff's department on us, and the sheriff's department allowed us to continue because they recognized what we were removing was on private property. We laid to bare earth what was on our land. Okay? I want to make sure that's very clear.
So your 10 minutes is up now?
We start the three minutes, yeah.
Okay, so I have three more minutes? Okay. So Judge Conley and Mrs. Conley knowingly and admittedly unabashedly and unapologetically utilized our land. They've admitted it to us as well. So I support the revocation of the Conley AEP because it's based on false information. The Conley's private party has zero adjacency to the public right-of-way in which they were given control. Zero. This fact alone should nullify the AEP. My husband and I are the only property owners with direct adjacency to the public right-of-way in discussion. These facts are known to the city of Sacramento. It was stated in the revocation. Due to the Conley's misrepresentation, misrepresentation of this material fact, the AEP should be revoked. I believe it should be noted that if the Conley AEP were to remain in place, it would set a precedent for non-adjacent and adjacent landowners in Sacramento to apply for an AEP to take control of the public right-of-way in front of their neighbor's private property, as my husband showed. That's the precedent that would be set by allowing this permit to continue. And there is no known AEP provided to a Sacramento property owner for such control. Nobody else has it. So why have they been afforded an undeserved privilege? And furthermore, their privilege has prejudiced us with the construction of a 38-foot fence which blocks direct access to our private property, which, gentlemen, is tantamount to an unlawful taking of our privately-owned residential property. Sharon Conley admitted at the December 6 council meeting that the Conleys wanted to control the public right-of-way in front of our property. Quote, "It extends our front yard and increases the value of our home," unquote. Her statements comport with the Conley's deceptive behavior, and I hate to say this, but it's true. For 30 years, the litany of lies and misrepresentations include creating the false boundary line between our properties, which allow them to exclusively control and develop our land as theirs. They occupied as well the public right-of-way in front of our land, which they claimed was theirs. They communicated to San Clemente and San Juan staff, we do not want our property, and that's why they controlled it. Judge Conley even sought a lot-line adjustment to possess our private property and falsely represented their properties adjacent to the city of Sacramento. Now, another misrepresentation, misrepresentation to the city of Sacramento to receive this AEP. I ask you to stand, I stand and revoke
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Conley, would you like to come up for three minutes?
Good evening, City Council. My name is Sharon Conley. First, I want to clarify, we had no idea that that was not city property, the whole thing. When we moved there, we were told by the owners of the property and the real estate agent that that was all city property and had been maintained by that home. The boundary line that she talked about there, that boundary line was there and we have pictures of it when we moved in. So it's totally untrue. Then, after that was presented to us, that, by the Arians, that that was not all city property, we got a survey and we did see that behind the traffic barrier was their land in San Juan Capistrano. But we had no idea through that amount of time that it was not all city property and was to be maintained by our home or had been maintained by our home and we were to continue it. So I, I want to clarify that. I don't know where I should pick up here. I'm here to discuss the Arians' need to access the proposed pergola. As the enlarged photo shows, they can simply walk on their property through the lava rock to their proposed pergola. We also want to discuss some inaccuracies contained in the agenda. First, we were never told that if the Arians eventually decided to build on the San Juan Capistrano property, we would have to remove everything from the San Clemente city right-of-way. We were informed that the city would have the final decision on any modifications to the right-of-way. After 30-year residence of San Clemente, we felt we would be treated fairly. Ordering us to remove 40 feet and $11,000 worth of improvement to accommodate a three-foot wide walkway for a neighbor in San Juan Capistrano is not fair. Second, the Assistant City Attorney Zach Ponson has visited our property twice in November of 2021 and December of 2022. Each time, he has stated his opinion, we could not stop the Arians from building a driveway across their city, across the San Clemente city right-of-way. Why a driveway? We do not believe the Arians can build an ADU on this property. We have a copy of an email from a veteran city planner in San Juan Capistrano saying, no ADU can be built in this area or subdivided because the property is in a very high-fire area. They already do have an ADU
Thank you very much.
On their property.
Mrs. Conley?
Thank you.
All right. Do we have any other speakers on behalf of, I guess, either party?
I have a quick question, the city attorney.
Yeah, we should go in the order we
City Attorney, is it, does it sound even feasible that an ADU can't be built on property with its high-fire?
I, I don't know off the top. It would depend on how the city of San Juan has implemented its ordinance. They might have excluded that, but we can find out.
May I begin?
Oh, go ahead, Laurel. The speakers should come up in the order the cards were received.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So she'll call the names?
Yeah, thanks a lot.
Okay.
Am I out of order?
Yes. Brian Dempsey is the next speaker.
Then four coming speakers, sir?
Seven, eight. There are eight remaining.
I'm going to just leave, so you guys will have to carry on.
Good evening. My name is Brian Dempsey, and I was a neighbor of the Conleys and the Arians for more than 30 years. In fact, my residence, which was a 2702 Paseo Activo, preceded each of their moving to the area. Of course, I'm here to speak to the appeal, and I'll be brief, but I'd like to first state that Mrs. Arian said unabashedly and unapologetically one or more statements. And I would like to unabashedly and unapologetically ask if any of us in this room would purchase a home without knowing our boundary lines. It just defies credibility of one or more of the Arian's statements. May I have the next slide? The little part in red is the area maintained by the Conleys for more than 30 years. And during the time of my residence, I might have seen, I'm sorry, maintained by the Conleys. And during my residence, I may have seen in real life the Arians approach that property those few square feet, one or perhaps two times over that 30 years. So why is the interest and why are the issues going on now? A question asked by the council was a good one. Have you tried mediation? Well, I would tell you that the Arians approached the Conleys to buy the property for $160,000, the piece of red property. But their condition was that they buy all of the land behind it, which is not buildable, which occurs in a fire area. And if we were to go up Camino Las Ramblas, we would probably see part of the slope in that area already down on Camino Las Ramblas. What person in their right mind would take on the liability for $160,000? Next slide, please. Here we see an ad of the Arians offering a cabana as a rental unit. And in fact, I, in the very early days of that construction, appealed to the city of San Juan
Sorry, sir, your time is up. Apologize. All right.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Followed by William Baker Esquire.
Good evening. My name is Bill Cunningham. For 42 years, my wife and I have lived in San Clemente in our home on Lot number 17, tract 4850. Lot 18, our next-door neighbors are the Conleys, where they have lived for 30 years. Lot 19, the last lot in our tract, is also in San Clemente and never has had a house built on it. The reason for this is that in the mid-1960s, the city of San Clemente reached an agreement with the developer that Lot 19 was to remain a landscape buffer zone with public access. Lot 19, a portion of which the city of San Clemente is reviewing, the revocation of the Conley's permit tonight, has as its northern boundary the city of San Juan Capistrano, where the Arians live. The city of San Juan Capistrano granted the Arians a permit to build a border wall and walkway on Lot 19 in the city of San Clemente. Does the city of San Juan Capistrano have the right to impose their will on the citizens of San Clemente by approving that permit? Lot 19 will be walled off from public access, effectively annexed and seceded to San Juan Capistrano if you grant this revocation. Rescinding the Conley's permit would be a betrayal by the city of San Clemente to their commitment to public access to this land and their pledge to protect what is valued in our city. Revocation of the Conley's permit will allow San Clemente public land to be used for private purposes by residents of San Juan Capistrano. The Arians can build their border wall on their property in San Juan Capistrano and have access to the land without going through the area under consideration. There are multiple ways they can do that, and they are aware of them. Preparing for tonight's presentation, I read through the document entitled "City of San Clemente: Vision and Strategic Plan." Woven through its mission statement, vision statement, and throughout the document, focus is put on protecting and preserving our environment. Here are a few statements from that visionary document that epitomize what we as a city value. Preserving what makes San Clemente special is important for the future. Residents value open space and benefit from access to it. San Clemente open space is a key part of its charm and identity. The city of San Clemente will foster a tradition dedicated to preserving and enhancing our village character, unique environment, and natural amenities. To me, it comes down to a private border wall on public open space benefiting residents of San Juan Capistrano versus valuing what is blueprinted in the city of San Clemente's vision. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, I have just a quick question from Mr. Cunningham. What year was that agreement between the developer and the
I don't know because the area was developed in the, in the 1960s. Our house, I think, was built in 1968. We didn't move in until 1980, so I'm not aware, but sometime in the 1960s.
Thank you.
A question of the speaker, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Sir, do you have Lot 19? Where is, I'm not familiar with that. Where is this?
If you remember some of the pictures before, originally, that was a cul-de-sac. So Lot 19 started way to the right of the road that goes up, Paseo Activo, right now. It included what wasn't Paseo Activo, and then it went all the way over to the left where part of that is where the Arians live, all the way down to the Conley's house.
Okay, Lot 19 doesn't include any of the area that you're
It does. Yes, it does. The Arians
Maybe someone before the hearing's over could, could show a map where that
Yes, several of the maps that were shown tonight do show where the property line is between the city of San Juan Capistrano where the property line is between the city of San Juan Capistrano and what's left over is part of property Lot nineteen.
So some of Lot nineteen is now the street?
Some of Lot nineteen is the street. Some of Lot nineteen belongs to the Pilates who are here tonight. Some of it belongs to the area where the Irian's live, but it is, and a part of it's that public right-of-way that's under discussion tonight.
Next speaker.
William Baker Esquire, and then John Luis Salem.
Thank you very much. My name's Bill Baker. I'm an attorney with Baker &amp; Baker, recognize the last name, in Santa Ana. And Judge Conley and his wife are, are clients and, and dear friends.
Mayor, could I just interject here and pause Mr. Baker's time? The time for the Conley team or the owner's team has passed. That was the ten minutes. Mr. Baker, it's kind of nuanced, but you can speak as a friend and as a member of the public, not as their representative.
Please don't take those seconds away from me.
Sorry about that. Wanted to make, make it fairer.
One of the things in the staff report, I believe, is incorrect. It's on page two, and it's up at the top, bullet point number four, and it says that there was an understanding that the Irian's would be allowed access to the property in the future if needed, and the, and the permit may be revoked at any time. And the revocation part is true, but not the understanding. If you look at the administrative encroachment permit, the text, and this is a document that the city prepared, I reviewed, had some comments and suggestions of changes that the Conleys requested. The changes were incorporated. The document was completed and signed, and the four corners of the document, even though it's got more than one, four corners, four corners of the document say what the agreement was, and there's nothing in there about an understanding of something having to do with the Irian's. But if you look at page two of the encroachment permit up at the top, it says it's a non-exclusive right granted to the Conleys. If you look at the illustrations provided by the Irian's for what they want to do, basically, they want a three-foot walkway through the middle of the, the property that's been maintained and landscaped, decorated, and improved by the Conleys for thirty years. They want a three-foot walkway. Why don't you just amend their encroachment permit to allow a three-foot walkway in the areas where the Irian's want it? That doesn't require the demolition of all of their other improvements. And if you happen to go to that property, as I have done many times, you'll see that as you approach, the Conley's house is on the left, the right-of-way is in the middle, the Irian's house is way off to the right, that the only common area that you can see is the Conley's house, their landscaping, and then the area of the right-of-way that is similar to their landscaping, so it looks like a unified approach. Conleys have never claimed to own the property. And Ms. Irian is right, and the other speaker is right. I dealt with Mark Brubaker, the Irian's attorney, for a long time, trying to work out some sort of written agreement or something we could do so we wouldn't have to have this problem. And we could not come to a meeting of the minds. It was very, very difficult and very, very sad. The law does allow the enforcement of equitable easements of the type created by the Conleys for over thirty years' use of this property. But to get an equitable easement, you have to file a lawsuit. Judge Conley doesn't want a lawsuit. He doesn't want to sue his neighbor. He just wants to have a good relationship as best he can, but also to keep up and maintain the area. I'll say in front of his house, because you walk out his front door, that's the first thing you see. Thank you very much for your time, and congratulations on those two who were just elected.
John Luis Salem, followed by Adam Frazier.
Mr. Chairman, council members. My name is John Luis Salem, and my house is located two houses south of the Conley property, the same street. And I'm here just to express my support to the Conley family. They have maintained this landscape for years to the enjoyment of all the neighbors around, and I don't think they deserve such a late, harsh ouster. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Adam Frazier, followed by Michaela Frazier.
My name's Adam Frazier. I'm one of the, I'm an Irian's son-in-law. I'm a real estate agent with Equity Forbes Global, and I also used to be Douglas Ellman. To kind of give you a background, which my place here, my in-laws kind of mentioned it. Basically, when I was working with Douglas Ellman, I did a title search to find the property values or property lines and kind of understand their property just because it's family. So I kind of wanted a little bit more details of where it went down the hill and kind of all that area, as the lot above was being sold at the time, too. So they're kind of interested in like whether or not to purchase that, et cetera, and stuff like that. Coincidentally, at the time, a couple, a couple months after I started doing the research, Conley's did put their house up for sale, so in history. When they did put it up for sale in the listing, they included a garden area, which is a property that is included, as or their maintained area that is Irian's property. When this was brought up to their agent, he amended it, as it is their fiduciary duty to be honest and forthcoming to anyone that's trying to purchase a property that is not for sale. So the listing previously had that property in valuation of the sale until it was brought up to the, to the agent, and then he amended it to obviously make sure he wasn't getting sued at any point in time if the property did sell. And then it's also obviously, at the same time, brought up the aspect of showing the Irian's where the property line truly was, past obviously any miscommunication or lack of knowledge, or just sort of letting the Conleys take care of it, kind of just being friendly neighbors over the course prior to past couple of years. So overall, I mean, as an agent, my biggest thing is honestly letting a permanent space, so I'm obviously in support of the revocation, letting a permanent space in front of a piece of property be gated off, fenced, whether or not they can walk around or not, is setting a very dangerous precedent to let neighbors fence off and block any other property from the street aspect of entrance. So whether they can walk around the back or anything like that, it's still their property, and then the city is allowing a gated or fenced-off area to block that property. So it does, you know, it's still property. It's not, it doesn't matter where the house is, it's their land in the course of the ownership. So that's kind of the, the fundamental aspect is who owns the land? Like, you know, are we blocking it with a fence? Or, you know, are we sort of cutting it off from any actual, you know, public accessway? Is, would be my main concern as an agent. Yeah, and then the lot, to my, to my knowledge, Lot nineteen, it was portioned up, I think, as he actually did mention, the two, two oh seven, sorry, twenty-seven oh oh one, the Irian's, and then the Akbar, the other property. So it's mainly a road, which is basically a cul-de-sac, and then the two properties adjacent, zero zero one and zero zero two, two seven zero zero one and two seven zero zero two, have purchased part of that.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Can I have a question? Yes, a question for the speaker.
One question. The fence you're referring to blocks access, aren't they proposing to put a fence there anyhow?
But it's their property.
Yeah, yeah, but they're replacing the fence.
Yeah, my point was sort of, I guess, would be to the point of if it's your property and you're permitted to, by the city, to build on your property, that would be an okay precedent. But if you're allowing neighbors to build a fence in front of your property, that's, that's a dangerous precedence for other people to put forth any type of easements to possibly, you know.
I see that, yeah.
Yeah, that would be just my concern as an agent of creating, obviously, issues down the road with sales or any aspect of ownership.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Michaela Frazier, is that right?
Correct. Michaela Frazier, followed by Abkar Piladi.
Hi, good evening. My name's Michaela Frazier. I'm the daughter of Mitch and Arlene Irian. I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm very abreast of this situation that's been going on for the last year and a half or so. I'm going to be brief, because for me, this is a pretty black-and-white situation that's been complicated by heightened emotions, to be perfectly honest. I'd like to start by saying I can actually sympathize with the Conleys and, and them having an emotional tie to a piece of property that they have tended to for thirty years. I've grown up in that household. I can even say it was beautifully maintained. I think they did an excellent job. But that said, it's not their property, and it never was their property. And there are definitive, undisputed property lines for a reason, which undeniably state that this is the Irian's property. So essentially, we're here because the Conleys are emotionally tied to a piece of property that wasn't ever legally theirs. I, I understand that the Conleys feel like they're a victim in this situation, and they're, they're being stripped of a property. But I'd like to mention, we should likely be looking at this through a different lens. And that's, for thirty years, the Conleys have had exclusive access and rights and the ability to utilize property that they've never paid for. No mortgage, no rent, no taxes, no insurance, et cetera. They've utilized property free for thirty years. So one could also argue they're quite lucky, is that's a luxury I don't think any of us have ever been afforded. As I see it, facts are facts. The Conleys have zero adjacency. This accessway is solely adjacent to and in front of the Irian's property. The right thing to do can't be to strip the owners of access to their own property in order to appease neighbors' feelings. Instead, the Irian's should be entitled to the same rights that everybody else is afforded. Thank you.
Thank you. Is this our final speaker?
Two speakers. Abkar Piladi, and then Derek Ketchum.
Good evening. My name is Akbar Piladi, and my wife, Yena Piladi, is here, too. We are the neighbors of Conleys and Irian's. And I feel I'm in a position that we have to take sides. And Conleys, this is not personal. It's not, you know, if you switch your positions, we would have supported you because a property owner's right should be preserved. And in this case, we firmly believe that Irian's, you know, they, they own the property, and no one else should dictate them how they should be accessing the property or, or what they should be putting on the property. Obviously, they need to get a permit if they want to build something, and both cities will have an opportunity to do that. So we support the staff's recommendation to revoke the AEP, and hopefully, you know, we'll let arrive or conclude with that decision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Final speaker is?
Is Derek Ketchum.
Good evening, council members. My name is Derek Ketchum. I've known the Irian's for a long time, and as far as character and integrity, I hold them in the highest esteem, not only as individuals and their family, but also their vocations that they've been involved with over the years. And I know that this has, whole ordeal has taken a toll on them these last couple of years. And I just want to, you know, as a property owner myself, not only do I want to support them, but I would support any property owner that, you know, they should have the right, have direct access to their property. And I'm in favor of the city of San Clemente revoking the administrative encroachment permit, permitting a neighbor to control an adjacent neighbor's private property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is that the final speaker?
That's all, yes.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and open it up for discussion. Anyone want to go first? Then I'll go first, then. I'm extraordinarily disappointed that we're here today. Could not, could not be more disappointed. We have neighbors against neighbors here. This isn't something that we should be spending, we got people, pickleball here. They wanted, they're fired up, they want to talk about pickleball. And we're here on a dispute that is much better settled, much better settled, between the two parties privately. Putting city council in this position is highly regrettable, in my opinion. And, you know, I, I know we have to decide this today, but I really, really wish and encourage you, you all, to figure this out amongst yourselves and not drag us in here to call balls and strikes in, in a dispute between two longtime neighbors who, who frankly should be able to figure this out, and, and somebody's got to be the better person here. I got to tell you, I, I feel for the Conleys. They, they've got this property, they're maintaining it. To me, it makes sense for them to maintain it. Right? But we have city staff and our codes that provide a pretty clear answer about who should control this, this property and where this property is adjacent to. And it's adjacent to the Irian's property. It just is. So for me, I really, really wish you could walk outside right now and figure out, maybe split it in half or something, so that we didn't have to do this. And it's highly regrettable, and I, I, you're, you're professional people. You, you should be able to figure this out yourself, frankly. This is a waste of our council time, to be honest. So, but the way I see it, it's pretty clear in terms of how the codes are written. I don't, I wish that wasn't the result, frankly, but that, that's, that's kind of how I see it. Anyone else?
Well, you want to speak? Well, I, I would just say we're, we're not a court, and we're not well-suited to take testimony and hear evidence, and we don't, we're not set up for this. I, I do agree that, that it is pretty subtle. I just can't, for the life of me, understand how there's any damage, though, to a neighbor wanting to take care of part of this public easement. Your property is your property, I understand that. If my neighbor wanted to come and take care of a little strip of land next to him, I'd let him if it was in the public domain. I don't, I can't understand what the motivation is, other than, yeah. For your property, it's absolutely clear, I agree with everything that's been said about, you know, your misunderstanding of where your land was, the private property. I agree completely. But as to this, one portion of, of, of public land, you know, I, I, I just, I just see if, I mean, I, I can't understand, you know, considering that you're proposing to put a fence up there anyhow, why you wouldn't let your neighbor just take care of it? It's not their property, it's not your property, but, you know, why not let them take care of it and make it nice for you? I, I don't, I don't understand that, that, I don't know where I'm going to come out on this in the end, but it just doesn't seem rational to me. And I do, I really do wish that, that you would sit down and, and come to a conclusion. I think in my experience, I've been, I've seen these in, in these kind of disputes, mostly in probate cases and, and divorce cases, where you just can't reach an agreement. I wish you could come to some kind of terms here. I, as to this walkway, I don't know that, you know, we would ever give you permit to put that walkway on, on that public land. But, you know, it's, those are my, my thoughts right now.
Want to go next, Steve?
Sure, I'll go, yeah, I'll go next. What's interesting in this case, being a longtime title insurance lawyer, was why the Conleys didn't file for prescriptive, prescriptive easement over the property that they maintained for thirty years. They would have gotten complete control over it without mortgages, without rent, without insurance, without taxes. They could have, they didn't, they were good citizens by, when the property line was realized, they, they backed off. They did do the right thing by coming to the city and asking for a administrative encroachment permit, which is the way it normally is done when you're putting personal property on public land. So, so that was done properly. I'm concerned that the, the interpretation of the, who's entitled to use private property, the right-of-ways, is being properly interpreted. I think if, if you're saying that the property needs to be in front of the, the, the right-of-way needs to be in front of the property, when I look at this, I see the Conley's property having this right-of-way in front of the Conley's property. You have a forty-five-degree angle saying, well, if it's kind of in their property, but kind of in the other neighbors', and we'll divide the baby by having a forty-five-degree line. To me, I, I'm not convinced that it's, that this right-of-way is not in front of the Conley's property. Not only that, what concerns me is they, they did the right thing by getting an administrative permit and, and making substantial improvements to the property. And that being said, I, I think the, I don't think they're in violation of the California Street and Highway Code. I think they've made substantial improvements to the property pursuant to an easement that was granted to them. And my, my position is that I would be opposed to the staff recommendation. I'll be voting no. I'll be voting no for this, on this matter.
Okay. Councilmember Ann Meyer.
I would just like to concur with Mayor Duncan here that at the end of this, no matter what way the decision falls, both of you, both parties here, have got to learn to work together going forward. This is not the spirit of our city, it's not the spirit of our town. And whatever that looks like, some way, you have to learn to be neighbors again, no matter how this decision ends. So that's all.
Gene.
Yeah. In many ways, I agree with Mayor Duncan. I feel like I was watching an episode of Judge Wapner. I was wondering where Rusty the bailiff was. The, I'm particularly troubled by this. It would appear to me that reasonable adults, educated, successful, reasonable adults could come up with a solution here. Absent that, you know, this council has been put into a pickle, no pun intended. I mean, if I could wave a wand right now, I would tell both parties to work it out in the next 60 days and come back in 60 days. I'm not sure that's, my colleagues would agree with that. I'm not sure the city attorney would agree with that. But these are two sets of good, decent people who have a different take and probably a reasonable and rational and truthful, I hope truthful, take on these events. I don't know. I'm a bit troubled with this.
Let me ask, we have to make a decision on this permit because otherwise it'll be revoked, right? So there's an appeal of a-
We can extend the permit.
Of a revoked permit or what?
All activities were stayed on the permit till tonight, or on the revocation, I should say.
Okay.
So it's frozen.
We can continue to stay the revocation.
Yes, you could.
Okay. Does anybody have a motion?
I'm going to have a motion to continue this for 60 days, stay the revocation. I'd like to see the parties get together. Whether you involve your attorneys or not, that'll be up to you. But my motion is to stay this for 60 days to see if the parties could, could come to a resolution on this. And not only that, I think we need to look at the San Juan Capistrano Planning Commission meeting in which the Irians evidently were discussing their plans for the, for that property. At least I need to look at it.
Right. Anybody want to second that motion?
I'll second that.
Under discussion, I would like to know, under discussion, I'd like to know what the parties think about that. I think while we can prefer them to work together, I think testimony's been given here that that effort has been substantial and long, and going on for a long time. I think they came here for a decision and if they're willing to take, what did you say, 50 or 60 days?
60, yes.
60. If they're willing to come back in 60 days and communicate with each other, I'm fine with that. If they tell, if either side says they're not willing to do that, I think they came here for a decision and they need to get a decision. So I'd like to ask the parties their thoughts on a continuance, if that's appropriate.
Sure. Judge Connolly, any interest in the continuance?
Well, it's a little bit like the 38th parallel in Korea. Still negotiating that one.
Yes. Well, would you agree to meet with the Irians in person? You and your wife and the Irians?
Yes.
Yes. Without attorneys? Okay. The Irians, what do you think? Mitchell?
Speak to, Gias.
Speak, speak to, speak towards us. Thank you. Yeah.
Is that a yes or no?
Yeah. Okay. So would you reapproach again? That, motions are running high.
Was that a yes? I can support the motion then.
Okay. Then we have a motion by?
Yeah. Thank you. I want to just clarify that you're keeping the hearing open and that it will still be open when you reconvene in 60 days.
Continuing the hearing for 60 days, is that?
Okay. That's what we're doing. Okay. The motion is to continue the hearing for 60 days. It's James with the second by Cabral. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Good luck, everyone.
An hour and a half for nothing.
Okay.
That hearing date would be approximately March 14th.
Okay. All right. Moving on, let's take a five-minute break.
Good evening, council members.
My name is Derek Ketchum.
I've known the Irians for a long time. And as far as character and integrity, I hold them in the highest esteem, not only as individuals and their family, but also their vocations that they've been involved with over the years. And I know that this has, whole ordeal has taken a toll on them these last couple of And I just want to, you know, as a property owner myself, not only do I want to support them, but I would support any property owner that, you know, they should have the right, have direct access to their property. And I'm in favor of City of San Clemente revoking the administrative encroachment permit, permitting a neighbor to control an adjacent neighbor's private property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is that the final speaker?
That's all.
Is that a yes or no?
Yeah. Okay. So would you reapproach again? That, motions are running high. Okay. Okay.
I can support the motion then.
Okay. Then we have a motion by?
Yeah. Thank you. I want to just clarify that you're keeping the hearing open and that it will still be open when you reconvene in 60 days.
Continuing the hearing for 60 days, is that?
Okay. That's what we're doing. Okay. The motion is to continue the hearing for 60 days. It's James with the second by Cabral. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Good luck, everyone.
An hour and a half for nothing.
Okay.
That hearing date would be approximately March 14th.
Okay. All right. Moving on, let's take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, council members. My name is Derek Ketchum. I've known the Irians for a long time. And as far as character and integrity, I hold them in the highest esteem, not only as individuals and their family, but also their vocations that they've been involved with over the years. And I know that this has, whole ordeal has taken a toll on them these last couple of years. And I just want to, you know, as a property owner myself, not only do I want to support them, but I would support any property owner that, you know, they should have the right, have direct access to their property. And I'm in favor of City of San Clemente revoking the administrative encroachment permit, permitting a neighbor to control an adjacent neighbor's private property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is that the final speaker?
That's all.
Okay. Final speaker is?
Is Derek Ketchum.
Good evening, council members. My name is Derek Ketchum. I've known the Irians for a long time. And as far as character and integrity, I hold them in the highest esteem, not only as individuals and their family, but also their vocations that they've been involved with over the years. And I know that this has, whole ordeal has taken a toll on them these last couple of years. And I just want to, you know, as a property owner myself, not only do I want to support them, but I would support any property owner that, you know, they should have the right, have direct access to their property. And I'm in favor of City of San Clemente revoking the administrative encroachment permit, permitting a neighbor to control an adjacent neighbor's private property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is that the final speaker?
That's all.
Okay. Final speaker is?
Is Derek Ketchum.
Good evening, council members. My name is Derek Ketchum. I've known the Irians for a long time. And as far as character and integrity, I hold them in the highest esteem, not only as individuals and their family, but also their vocations that they've been involved with over the years. And I know that this has, whole ordeal has taken a toll on them these last couple of years. And I just want to, you know, as a property owner myself, not only do I want to support them, but I would support any property owner that, you know, they should have the right, have direct access to their property. And I'm in favor of City of San Clemente revoking the administrative encroachment permit, permitting a neighbor to control an adjacent neighbor's private property. Thank you. Thank you. Is that the final speaker?
That's all.
Okay. Final speaker is?
Is Derek Ketchum.
Good evening, council members. My name is Derek Ketchum. I've known the Irians for a long time. And as far as character and integrity, I hold them in the highest esteem, not only as individuals and their family, but also their vocations that they've been involved with over the years. And I know that this has, whole ordeal has taken a toll on them these last couple of years. And I just want to, you know, as a property owner myself, not only do I want to support them, but I would support any property owner that, you know, they should have the right, have direct access to their property. And I'm in favor of City of San Clemente revoking the administrative encroachment permit, permitting a neighbor to control an adjacent neighbor's private property. Thank you. Thank you. Is that the final speaker?
That's all.
Okay. Final speaker is?
Is Derek Ketchum.
Good evening, council members. My name is Derek Ketchum. I've known the Irians for a long time. And as far as character and integrity, I hold them in the highest esteem, not only as individuals and their family, but also their vocations that they've been involved with over the years. And I know that this has, whole ordeal has taken a toll on them these last couple of years. And I just want to, you know, as a property owner myself, not only do I want to support them, but I would support any property owner that, you know, they should have the right, have direct access to their property. And I'm in favor of City of San Clemente revoking the administrative encroachment permit, permitting a neighbor to control an adjacent neighbor's private property. Thank you. Thank you. Is that the final speaker?
That's all.
Okay. Final speaker is?
Is Derek Ketchum.
Good evening, council members. My name is Derek Ketchum. I've known the Irians for a long time. And as far as character and integrity, I hold them in the highest esteem, not only as individuals and their family, but also their vocations that they've been involved with over the years. And I know that this has, whole ordeal has taken a toll on them these last couple of years. And I just want to, you know, as a property owner myself, not only do I want to support them, but I would support any property owner that, you know, they should have the right, have direct access to their property. And I'm in favor of City of San Clemente revoking the administrative encroachment permit, permitting a neighbor to control an adjacent neighbor's private property. Thank you. Thank you. Is that the final speaker?
That's all.
Okay. Final speaker is?
Is Derek Ketchum.
Good evening, council members. My name is Derek Ketchum. I've known the Irians for a long time. And as far as character and integrity, I hold them in the highest esteem, not only as individuals and their family, but also their vocations that they've been involved with over the years. And I know that this has, whole ordeal has taken a toll on them these last couple of years. And I just want to, you know, as a property owner myself, not only do I want to support them, but I would support any property owner that, you know, they should have the right, have direct access to their property. And I'm in favor of City of San Clemente revoking the administrative encroachment permit, permitting a neighbor to control an adjacent neighbor's private property. Thank you. Thank you. Is that the final speaker?
That's all.
Okay. Final speaker is?
Is Derek Ketchum.
Good evening, council members. My name is Derek Ketchum. I've known the Irians for a long time. And as far as character and integrity, I hold them in the highest esteem, not only as individuals and their family, but also their vocations that they've been involved with over the years. And I know that this has, whole ordeal has taken a toll on them these last couple of years. And I just want to, you know, as a property owner myself, not only do I want to support them, but I would support any property owner that, you know, they should have the right, have direct access to their property. And I'm in favor of City of San Clemente revoking the administrative encroachment permit, permitting a neighbor to control an adjacent neighbor's private property. Thank you. Thank you. Is that the final speaker?
That's all.
Okay. Final speaker is?
Is Derek Ketchum.
Good evening, council members. My name is Derek Ketchum. I've known the Irians for a long time. And as far as character and integrity, I hold them in the highest esteem, not only as individuals and their family, but also their vocations that they've been involved with over the years. And I know that this has, whole ordeal has taken a toll on them these last couple of years. And I just want to, you know, as a property owner myself, not only do I want to support them, but I would support any property owner that, you know, they should have the right, have direct access to their property. And I'm in favor of City of San Clemente revoking the administrative encroachment permit, permitting a neighbor to control an adjacent neighbor's private property. Thank you. Thank you. Is that the final speaker?
That's all.
Okay. Final speaker is?
Is Derek Ketchum.
Good evening, council members. My name is Derek Ketchum. I've known the Irians for a long time. And as far as character and integrity, I hold them in the highest esteem, not only as individuals and their family, but also their vocations that they've been involved with over the years. And I know that this has, whole ordeal has taken a toll on them these last couple of years. And I just want to, you know, as a property owner myself, not only do I want to support them, but I would support any property owner that, you know, they should have the right, have direct access to their property. And I'm in favor of City of San Clemente revoking the administrative encroachment permit, permitting a neighbor to control an adjacent neighbor's private property. Thank you. Thank you. Is that the final speaker?
That's all.
Okay. Final speaker is?
Is Derek Ketchum.
Good evening, council members. My name is Derek Ketchum. I've known the Irians for a long time. And as far as character and integrity, I hold them in the highest esteem, not only as individuals and their family, but also their vocations that they've been involved with over the years. And I know that this has, whole ordeal has taken a toll on them these last couple of years. And I just want to, you know, as a property owner myself, not only do I want to support them, but I would support any property owner that, you know, they should have the right, have direct access to their property. And I'm in favor of City of San Clemente revoking the administrative encroachment permit, permitting a neighbor to control an adjacent neighbor's private property. Thank you. Thank you. Is that the final speaker?
That's all.
Okay. Final speaker is?
Is Derek Ketchum.
Good evening, council members. My name is Derek Ketchum. I've known the Irians for a long time. And as far as character and integrity, I hold them in the highest esteem, not only as individuals and their family, but also their vocations that they've been involved with over the years. And I know that this has, whole ordeal has taken a toll on them these last couple of years. And I just want to, you know, as a property owner myself, not only do I want to support them, but I would support any property owner that, you know, they should have the right, have direct access to their property. And I'm in favor of City of San Clemente revoking the administrative encroachment permit, permitting a neighbor to control an adjacent neighbor's private property. Thank you. Thank you. Is that the final speaker?
That's all.
Okay. Final speaker is?
Is Derek Ketchum.
Good evening, council members. My name is Derek Ketchum. I've known the Irians for a long time. And as far as character and integrity, I hold them in the highest esteem, not only as individuals and their family, but also their vocations that they've been involved with over the years. And I know that this has, whole ordeal has taken a toll on them these last couple of than for good cause, he would be entitled to a lump sum payment in an amount equal to up to nine months of his base pay. It is recommended by Mayor Duncan and Mayor Protem Noblock that the city council approve the city manager employment agreement with Mr. Andy Hall and authorize acceleration of the agreement's commencement date if Mr. Hall should become available before that date. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anybody have a motion?
Public comments?
Oh, we have public comments? I'm sorry. Somebody's standing in the way of pickleball here.
First public comment is Amanda Q.
So I'm kind of concerned about this because, you know, when looking up about the city of council, the city manager position, I'm concerned regarding about the, the salary that he had or is going to have. Before, he was making $217,000 and that recently got increased to $240,000 in November of 2022 in Imperial Beach. Now it's going to be increased to $270,000. However, the main concern that I have that there is a nine-month severance package where if something happens or if, that he's going to be paid for nine months. And I think that that is not fiscally responsible. And there are certain situations where we should have a time period that, you know, to assess his ability as a city manager. Where he was a city manager, the population was significantly lower, about like 26,000, 27,000. And now he's going to a city where it's over, what, 60,000, 64,000? So there's a concern regarding that. But I think that it's not physically, fiscally responsible to give a nine-month severance package to him immediately. I think it needs to be graduated, graduated situation, then after maybe nine months, a year, then, then based on his experience and whatnot and how he did at a city with a population of our size, then put that severance, that severance package in, but not right now, not at the start. That I think that, that's not wise to do. I think it's being fair to wait, to see how he does, and then give them that severance package. So I think that we really need to be, go back to negotiate that and I'm really concerned that we, the public really didn't know too much about this because there was, you know, a gap of time from when you selected and hired him to, to now. But anyways, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay.
Next speaker is Erica Cortez.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers of staff and community members. I will make sure I'm brief because pickleball is, besides the contract with the city manager is one thing that you want to celebrate tonight. My name's Erica Cortez. I'm the chief administrative officer for the city of Imperial Beach. I'm basically Andy's left hand. I say left because he's left-handed. I can vouch for my city manager 100%. You will not regret it. And if you don't want it, I'll take him back at any given second. I, obviously, we all have families to sustain and we have responsibilities, but I can guarantee you that if he can do this stuff for free, he would do it. So you will not regret it. He's an amazing city manager and he's an amazing public servant. A lot of the things and observations that I personally done myself here at your meeting, they're going to be fixed within the first month. So with that, thank you for having me here and allowing me to address the council and he will be awesome for your city.
All right, thank you for coming. Appreciate that.
And the final speaker is concerned resident.
One thing I believe on, that I believe that everyone, everyone here can agree that our city deserves a competent leader. It is my understanding, the candidate presented tonight for our city manager is currently overseeing a city with a population of 27,300 as of the last census. This is less than half of the San Clemente's population. And according to the Imperial Beach website, he has a full-time assistant city manager. So I just want to know, did you guys take, gentlemen, take into consideration that he will be capable of running this city substantially larger without a city assistant city manager? And as far as the salary package, I do agree with Amanda that I don't see where it's fiscally responsible to put the city on hook for nine months severance, which I think is about $180,000, where there's no even probation period. I mean, if you need to let this man go in 30, 60, 90 days, why are we paying him $180,000? Why isn't he on probation to prove his capability to us? But I'm not an HR manager, but it kind of doesn't make sense. But if he's the right man for the job, so be it. But please reconsider the fiscal responsibility. And I hope you took into the fact that he's running a substantially larger city and he has not done that in the past on his own. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
And I did receive one last card from Tim Brown.
All right.
I know. Did I hear collective groans there? I apologize. I'm only going to take 15, 20 minutes. Don't worry about it, gentlemen. So I just, I felt like I needed to say something on this one in particular. First, I have had a hand in and assisted in overseeing many of the hiring decisions for the city for a period of time. Some were great wins, some were mediocre results, and I've learned a lot in that process. The one thing I've learned is, is it's a fairly imperfect science on recruitment of a city manager. You don't learn a lot about them until they get here, but I can say unequivocally, just from the basic amount of research I've done on this particular hire, I think the council's absolutely a home run. There has been excellent reports from the different folks I've talked to about his competency. It's difficult to say on one hand that it's fiscally irresponsible to pay somebody more than their previous city, on the other hand, to say at the same time that they are now going to be governing a city that's three times bigger. Like you do have to pay for that type of impact, and that's exactly what you do. Regarding the severance package, it's very typical, by the way, for city manager packages. The reason is, is because you come to a new city and recruited, you exist by a vote to three. And as councils change, you realize that that can turn over quite, quite a bit. And so it's very standard practice. And I just want the public, obviously, I'm saying this to council, but the public should know, there's very standard practice for city managers to receive this type of package, and they do that because you're being recruited from another city. There has to be an improvement in the circumstance, otherwise there's no reason to take that type of a risk. But I wanted to commend the council on this recruitment. I think the hire was brilliant. Candidly, having somebody from Beach City is an amazing get, which is very challenging to find and willing to move into this. And it's also extremely rare for a city manager to move downstream or parallel and sort of find a city of equal population in a beach city that's going to move over to another beach city is usually a sign of something not very good. So you always want to recruit upwards and you want to recruit from similar situated cities, and candidly, the council did this. I think it's wonderful. I'd like to welcome Andy in that hire. I think it's great that his administrative assistant came up to be able to say that, and I think it's great. So I commend the council on this, and I think it's a wise decision.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Brown. Okay, that was the last speaker. Any discussion?
I did not take part in that interview process, but I had the distinct pleasure of meeting Mr. Hall at 11:30 one day at my favorite Italian restaurant in San Diego. And I think Mr. Hall will confirm, we walked out of there at 3:30. I spent four hours talking to him about everything from homeless to, to paying down our unfunded liability, to dealing with contract police services, contract fire services. I would have to say it was one of the most amazing conversations I've had since being on, on city council. I will address the, the nine-month severance. I looked into this. I've asked a lot of questions about it because on its face, it does seem, seem like a lot. But I think 12 months is more the rule than even nine months. And we're asking someone who is settled, doing a great job in, in, in their current job, to then take a chance to come up here and rely on, on three people to keep them in that job. I was once told by an old city manager, really, the only thing city managers need to know how to do is count to three. So I'm not particularly concerned about the nine-month severance, and I agree with former Mayor Brown that he's coming to a larger city with more accountabilities and, and I stand by the mayor and Mayor Protem's discussions or negotiations at the currently current salary rate. So I will be an enthusiastic yes.
Counselor Cabral.
Yeah, I would go into more detail about our interview process and what, what we learned about him, but I know for the sake of time and your schedule that we're trying to move this agenda a little bit faster than we normally would, and we have another group ready to present. So I don't know if it's appropriate to make the motion right now to approve him or whether you want, if my colleagues have more.
I think we're just about there. I just want to make sure.
I want to make sure, too. Maybe at other meetings, we can further elaborate on, on why we found him extraordinarily qualified unanimously.
Right. We, we, we did, and Andy's ability to, to develop staff and really get the most out of his staff is, is, is one of the things that was critically important as well. He also came up with an idea in the encroachment permit thing, just, just during the break. So he's already on it. But if you, if you'd like to make the motion, I think we're ready.
I move that the city council approve the city manager employment agreement with Andy Hall and authorize acceleration of the agreement commencement date if that should become possible.
Second.
Okay, the motion is Cabral. Second is Mayor Protem Noblock. All in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Welcome, Andy.
And I'd like to, I'd like to invite Andy up to just address us. He knows he's, he's between pickleball and everybody going home, so we'll, we'll see how he does here in terms of brevity.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, this is tough to be between you and pickleball and getting out of here tonight, but I'm really excited to be here. I really am really excited about this opportunity to be in San Clemente. I come here with the well wishes, by the way, of, of your fellow council members in Imperial Beach. It's a great little beach town, if you don't know anything about it. Rather complex. We do have to deal with a lot of things. It's an international community, as you know, on the border. Have to deal with a lot of those issues and, and again, military issues with Naval Base Coronado on both sides of the city. But look, really, I'm really looking forward to this. I, I think some people may not understand, I've actually worked for larger organizations and smaller organizations. And it's, it's, for me, I really do like the smaller organizations where you can get involved, you get to know the people in the community, get to know your staff. Really looking forward to that. I'm going to keep it really short. I was already seated if I could be challenged with brevity. Here it is. I'm just really excited. I had, you know, I practiced this speech in the bathroom for like 25 minutes, but I'm not going to get in the way of pickleball, so I'm going to get out of the way. But you know what? This is going to be a lot of fun. We have, we have a lot of things that, you know, the, I, I had an opportunity this weekend to go to a Martin Luther King celebration, and the speaker had something that I really applies to us tonight, as I watched you deliberate on what was a very difficult issue. He said, sometimes, and he was talking to a lot of elected officials, sometimes when we talk, people listen to us, but they always watch. And people are going to watch what we do. And I just want to make sure that when they watch us, that there's a really good group of elected officials and dedicated staff trying to make San Clemente the best town that it can possibly be. And I'm sure that that's what they're going to see. So again, thank you for this opportunity, really looking forward to it, and I'll, I'm going to get out of here so pickleball can get up.
Let's get out for one picture.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I didn't want to, I hate pictures. I hate pictures, so this is not my idea.
Well, you shouldn't be next to Gene.
I know.
And Mayor Brown, this is not his administrative assistant, this is his chief administrative officer, okay?
Okay, we're moving to pickleball. Now, before we, we get into this, I want to make a point here. The purpose of this item, it was agendized here by Councilmember James, is to speed up the building of four courts at, at Steed Park. So if you're interested in having courts built at Steed Park, not really needed to make the comments, like that's what this is already about. If you're not, then maybe you want to make some comments, but I just want to lay that out. I mean, I'd like to be here and decide on this, but we don't need to hear a bunch of people saying, build them on Steed. That's what this is all about. We're, you know, it's about moving forward quickly. So with that, do we have a staff presentation or? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Kyle Kogar, Public Works Director, and I also have Samantha Wiley, our Beaches Park and Records Director, with me here tonight to help with the presentation. This is the reconsider, reconsideration of the contract award for the design of Richard T. Steed Park Memorial Sports Park Pickleball Courts. Next slide. Fiscal impact, design and construction support costs of $404,000 are within the approved available budget. Funding for the construction of at least four pickleball courts has been identified and is available in the Park Acquisition and Development Fund and General Fund for a total of about $3 million. Additional funding strategies for the complete park development project will be discussed later in the presentation.
I'm going to briefly go through this because it's in your report. This gives a very in-depth overview of where we've been from a public outreach standpoint and where this process started, dating back to 2021, based on an award of contract to SWA, our design firm who did the five park site-specific master plan updates. Next slide, please. Through the course of our public outreach, this did go to the Beaches Parks and Recreation Commission two times, first draft review, second draft review. Again, all of that is in the contents of the staff report. This slide specifically presents what is the second draft conceptual design of the Steed Park development or build-out, and it does display that there's a recommendation for up to 16 pickleball courts within that park vicinity, as outlined and circled in that area on this slide. Next slide, please. get to know the people in the community, get to know your staff. Really looking forward to that. I'm going to keep it really short. I was already seated if I could be challenged with brevity. Here it is. I'm just really excited. I had, you know, I practiced this speech in the bathroom for like 25 minutes, but I'm not going to get in the way of pickleball, so I'm going to get out of the way. But you know what? This is going to be a lot of fun. We have a lot of things that, you know, the, I had an opportunity this weekend to go to a Martin Luther King celebration and the speaker had something that really applies to us tonight, as I watched you deliberate on what was a very difficult issue. He said, sometimes, and he was talking to a lot of elected officials, sometimes when we talk, people listen to us, but they always watch. And people are going to watch what we do. And I just want to make sure that when they watch us, that there's a really good group of elected officials and dedicated staff trying to make San Clemente the best town that it can possibly be. And I'm sure that that's what they're going to see. So again, thank you for this opportunity, really looking forward to it. And I'm going to get out of here so pickleball can get up.
Let's get out for one picture.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I didn't want to. I hate pictures. I hate pictures, so this is not my idea.
Well, you shouldn't be next to Gene.
I know.
We'll move over to this one. Keep going, Mark.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. And then there's one more picture.
And Mayor Brown, this is not his administrative assistant. This is his chief administrative officer, okay?
Okay. We're moving to pickleball. Now, before we get into this, I want to make a point here. The purpose of this item, it was agendized here by Councilmember James, is to speed up the building of four courts at Steed Park. So if you're interested in having courts built at Steed Park, not really needed to make the comments, like that's what this is already about. If you're not, then maybe you want to make some comments. But I just want to lay that out. I mean, I'd like to be here and decide on this, but we don't need to hear a bunch of people saying, build them on Steed. That's what this is all about. You know, it's about moving forward quickly. So with that, do we have a staff presentation or?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Kyle Coger, Public Works Director. And I also have Samantha Wiley, our Beaches Park and Recreation Director, with me here tonight to help with the presentation. This is the reconsideration of the contract award for the design of Richard T. Steed Park Memorial Sports Park Pickleball Courts. Next slide. Fiscal impact. Design and construction support costs of $404,000 are within the approved available budget. Funding for the construction of at least four pickleball courts has been identified and is available in the park acquisition and development fund and general fund for a total of about $3 million. Additional funding strategies for the complete park development project will be discussed later in the presentation.
Next slide.
I'm going to briefly go through this because it's in your report. And this gives a very in-depth overview of where we've been from a public outreach standpoint and where this process started, dating back to 2021, based on an award of contract to SWA, our design firm who did the five park site-specific master plan updates. Next slide, please. Through the course of our public outreach, this did go to the Beaches Parks and Recreation Commission two times, first draft review, second draft review. Again, all of that is in the contents of the staff report. This slide specifically presents what is the second draft conceptual design of the Steed Park development or build-out. And it does display that there's a recommendation for up to 16 pickleball courts within that park vicinity, as outlined and circled in that area on this slide. Next slide, please. Again, this is council's action specific to this park site update. The council reviewed this at December, on its December 21st, 2021 meeting and directed staff to prioritize the construction of at least four pickleball courts. This came up again at the budget workshop and finally, the budget adoption as well, where the project was approved for designing, construction, management, up to $500,000 in that CIP. And then it came back to the city council through a, we have to do environmental analysis still for Steed Park. That came back on June 7th. I do want to note that the city council did see this concept design again at that meeting as well. I wanted to also point out that the construction estimates that we received, that $8 million figure that I know has been discussed, those are estimates. They were provided by SWA. Nothing has been finalized and the intent is to, once the concept and the environmental review are done, that would be packaged and presented to council in the spring of 2023. So that is closely upon us. And that's where the $8 million came from. $3 million is currently budgeted out of the want for council to build at least four. So that's where we've covered that. Next slide, please.
At the June 7th meeting, city council received and filed a report regarding the continuation of pickleball at San G Park. And on November 15th, the last year, city council approved agreement with RGM Design Group, but the agreements have not been executed. Next slide, please. I'll just go through a quick project description. The project includes the design of multiple features in the park. It prioritizes the design of four courts with the option to build up to 16 pickleball courts in future construction phases. It includes a courtside plaza area with shade structures, a restroom building, additional 100 parking spaces near the courts, a new sidewalk pathway to the parking lot, and new landscaping, irrigation, lighting, and fencing. Next slide, please. Just to briefly go over to the scope of work to kind of talk about some of the complexity of the project, from civil engineering back point of view, field research and geotechnical report, aerial survey and preparation of base maps, grading plan, water sewer plan, erosion control, horizontal control plan, hydrology, and water quality management plan. Next slide, please. Shore engineering, plans and details for the court plaza area improvements, post-ention slab and design. Electrical engineering, site electrical plan for all improvements. Next slide. Landscape architecture, construction plans and details outlining all landscape material to be installed, and bidding construction support services, prepare bid documents upon completion of final plans, materials submitted and shop drawing review, response to RFIs and field review and inspections during construction. Next slide, please.
I'll briefly discuss the funding and phasing strategies that staff have presented within the report. What is in the report is really a brief overview. There's an intent, when we bring back the entire conceptual design, including the SEQA findings, to talk more strategically about what a funding and phasing strategy could look like. I want to highlight that the Beaches Parks and Recreation Commission also has established a sponsorship subcommittee that is actively working on methods to raise funds for future park improvements. So that certainly is one of their priorities as well, specific to Steed Park. Designing the park improvements before a construction contract is awarded allows the city to identify the full cost of improvements and then also go out and seek funding opportunities, whether that's through grants or local funding. Essentially, any agency that we seek grants from or potential sponsorship from, even if that's a public-private partnership, those organizations want to see an approved rubber-stamped design. And that's what we're seeking to today, is that 16-court design, but really focusing on the first phase, which is a four-court build-out. Next slide, please. Again, I touched on this earlier. SWA provided the rough construction costs and estimates, and we would bring that back with the full concept design plan. Staff is recommending that we move forward with the design at this point to fund the design, and then we can break out the actual construction into future phases. That could be done in up to four phases potentially. If you're looking at 16 courts, you can look at doing, breaking that into four courts, however many years the council desires to. Next slide, please. That's it. And we are happy to take any questions from the council if there are any. Thank you.
Any questions? Staff? Quick question. I think a priority is to do this as quickly as possible.
Absolutely.
I'm not sure I'm concerned about restrooms, because you can have porta potties. I'm not sure I'm concerned about lighting right now, because we don't have lighting currently. For Mr. Coger and for you, Samantha, how quickly can we lay surface and have four pickleball courts for the public use?
So the schedule that we have in the current contract is for the full design of this whole area, and that's at seven months. If we do less, we can cut it down a little bit, but there's still these parameters that you have to hit. Let's say six months, we can have a full design to you. Two months, three months to bid it, get it out to construction, and then maybe a year from now, it's possible.
If I could, I agree with Councilman James' comments about the speed. I want to talk a little bit about what's required. Kyle, you mentioned the, if we do a complete design, if we go forward with four courts so that we can give San G residents some break, can't we identify the four-court area and concentrate on getting a court slab built and let even the formal design work of the other 12 courts and the lights and the bathrooms and the other fixtures and all the amenities that go with it? Can we quicker than six months identify where that first footprint would be? I know you need to do grading. That needs to be done. That needs to be contracted for. That's going to take some time. But identify that footprint, initial footprint, and get that thing done, as Councilman James suggested, in less than six months?
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
I don't think so.
Really?
Yeah.
Rules have been fought in less time than that.
The reason that I put up the scope of work is because I wanted to understand, there's a lot of different disciplines that go into that. And yeah, we can do a smaller project and do a little bit, you know, faster than a larger project, but you still have things that you have to do. You have to figure out, where's the electricity? How are we going to get it in place?
If there's a slab, there is no electricity. We're not talking lights.
I mean, if we're looking at just doing courts, you know, on a level piece of land, yeah, we could probably do it faster than that. I don't really know the timeframe, but it could be done faster in six, seven months.
The problem becomes, in the effort to speed things up, we do something that we're going to have to tear out when we do the larger project, right? And so now we're kind of wasting our time, right? We're doing something so fast that it can't be integrated into a larger project. That's what my concern is. I mean, I want to make sure we do it right. Fast, but right.
I think Mr. Coger is a professional. He can put a slab down, he can put a surface down and fence it and have, and we can add all the amenities at a later time.
Condoms can go underground. We can work around it.
We can work around all of that. I would, you know, I would like to put a sunset on this at somewhere between four and six months. I mean, I want, I would like to see us move that quickly. We've been talking about it too damn long.
Yeah, I agree with that. And the ultimate design work that makes it really the quality project, if we have a footprint for that slab to get the courts on-site, we can build around that. And that includes the design work that normally would be done in a much, much longer period of time. But I agree, I'd like to see, I'd like to see this move quicker, if that's at all possible. You know, we eliminated pickleball at one of our parks because the citizens complained and we eliminated it. I think the residents of San G deserve the same respect and the same dignity and protection from their city, from noise. And I know we just had a noise report come out that says we're kind of within the legal standard. But legal standard is one thing and air pollution, noise pollution is another issue. So.
Wait, wait, wait. We're getting into, we're getting into discussion. We haven't heard public comment yet, so I want to make sure we get the public comments first.
I just agree with expedition. Yep.
Okay. How many cards do we have?
Mr. Mayor, as she does the math.
Twelve.
And on behalf of staff, we hear you. We know this is a high priority. We know the urgency with which you want us to deal with it. We will. We've got to develop a bid package, go to bid, award bid, start engineering on the narrow focus that you defined tonight. That can't be done in four months. I'm just telling you, it cannot be done in four months. But I could tell you, you've been clear. I think you'll reiterate it tonight. High urgency, but there is, I'll just, there is work that needs to be done and we'll make it a high priority and do it as fast as we can, as narrow as you want the scope to be to meet your interests.
Okay. All right. Let's start going through the public speakers.
I'm in.
Twelve.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to make a motion because I want to get you out of here.
Yeah, I have a hard out at 9:30.
I want to make a motion that item 11D that we kicked to the February 3rd meeting. There's no appointment that needs to be done in the next two or three weeks.
Okay. Is that okay with everybody?
Could I just make one comment on 11D? SCAG needs an appointee by early February. Their meeting isn't until May, but they do need a name sooner.
For SCAG?
Yes.
City Council, Public Works, Governments.
So.
SCAG? I don't even remember that one. Do you have a SCAG person? He was on it before.
Laura.
Okay. Anybody interested in SCAG?
Yeah.
I was.
Yeah.
No, no.
I just wanted to bring it to our attention.
Yeah. I have an interest in SCAG. I've worked with them in the past and.
Do you want to defer to Steve on this? Victor, do you want to talk about it more?
Just to let you know.
I'll defer to Steve. I'll defer to Steve. If Steve has, if that's, has a real interest.
So if that's his motion, I'll second his motion.
Okay. All in favor of Mayor Pro Tem Noblock going to, as our SCAG represented?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And we can make Cabral the alternate.
Okay. Perfect.
No, thank you. Appreciate that, Laura.
First speaker is Tim Brown.
Mayor, members of council, thank you for giving me the opportunity tonight. I think I want to be very succinct, as I think all of the speakers also want to be succinct. You know, on this one here, just hearing the deliberation, you know, I think, I love the urgency of it, but in particular, the idea that you move forward with this, what's going to happen is if you build four courts, the project could potentially stall out at that point. A lot of the time, well, it's four courts and then you got to go to another RFP and then you go to, and what happens is these things tend to get stuck in inertia. And so my counsel would be to be urgent, but also to be deliberative on the long-term implications. For example, four courts is one tennis courts worth of pickleball courts. What's currently at San G is two tennis courts worth or eight courts. You're probably going to see a tremendous amount of demand imposed, especially if you shut down eight and only have four open and a bunch of red shirts showing up here every Tuesday night with their hair on fire, because that's just the nature of pickleball. It creates all sorts of weird evocations and passions that we didn't know we had before. But I would say that it would be important on this one, although with the degree of urgency, to also be measure twice, cut once, to move forward with the infrastructure that makes sense, that's well-designed. But I would say that if you're going to move forward, a minimum of eight courts to have a true displacement on those two. But I will say, and it's difficult for appreciation to come across with this passion, how grateful are we that we're taking this action tonight? This is a dream come true for this pickleball community, which by the way, most of us are very young in this sport. Thank you for your efforts on this, especially for your passion for it. We support whatever path you want to take. I would just counsel a wise approach, a measured approach with urgency, as communicated. I think Sean caught it well. I think staff hears the urgency. I think they'll manage to that outcome. If it's six months or eight months, I don't think the world will fall apart. The community will still be here. We'll manage it as best we can and we'll continue to manage it into the future. But thank you for your efforts tonight. I think that's what our community would probably want to say. Thank you.
Next speaker is Amanda Q., followed by Marty Weinberg.
I came here in closed session, so I really thought I was going to be the first, so I don't know when someone submitted their card ahead of me. Anyways, I think it's really important to read over what happened at the December 21st, 2021 city council meeting, because I think there's some concerns and that I'm hearing when other people are speaking about this. Director of Beaches Parks and Recreation, Ms. Wiley stated the following. Again, this is a request coming back to council and it's specifically looking at San Gregorio, the site-specific master plan, as well as the pickleball element that exists there today. I do want to preface that we're not looking to adopt the master plan as they are in your attachments today. That will come back to council at a later meeting to include the other four sites that we are updating. The BPNR Commission did review the second draft in its meeting last week, and they did provide a recommendation to council that will be coming back. That approves the second draft conceptual plans for both San Gregorio Park and Steed Park, and Steed Park is included in this report. To give some context, to include where pickleball is going in the future, should these plans be adopted. She further adds, the recommendation in the second draft is to actually relocate the pickleball courts to the freeway wall, which directly aligns with the original intent of the park. That said, activity should be located next to the freeway wall as to reduce noise impact on the neighborhood surrounding. So we cover that in this move. It also is in, the master plan does then stipulate that the two courts that are there now should return to tennis as it originally were intended. So I don't think that there's a concern regarding that we're going to take those out. But it's my understanding that when I'm looking at the agenda in the city council meeting the last time where Mayor, I mean, Councilmember James could not attend, it's changing because the staff recommendation has changed. I thought it was just going to be transferred over. Here it says, direct staff to prioritize the construction of at least four pickleball courts and necessity-associated amenities as outlined in the proposed Richard T. Steed Park Master Plan pickleball facility design. Again, I spoke at the last city council meeting, because each time this is coming to the city council, it keeps on changing. And that should have been consistent with what happened last time. And this was just moved so, you know, Mayor, City Councilmember James could be here. So I am in support of four pickleball courts to begin at Steed Park. And thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, Steve Noblock, for mentioning about a concerned citizen, about the concerned residents in the San Gregorio Park. And I think that's really important to address because they do need some peace and quiet. But I also support the four pickleball courts at Steed Park. Thank you.
Marty Weinberg, followed by Vern West.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I'm Marty Weinberg, USA Pickleball Ambassador for the City of San Clemente. I spoke at the last meeting promoting pickleball. I mentioned that we have several hundred people playing pickleball in San Clemente, the community excitement regarding the newly funded courts, and also how tournament revenue can help pay for pickleball in the future. So this meeting, I'm not going to repeat the same talking points. I hope others will come up and talk about that. Gene James, in June, at the big tournament, a lifetime, you were excited about pickleball, you were excited about tournaments, and you were excited about tournament revenue. You asked me, how many courts would we need to have a tournament that size and to generate that much revenue? And we were talking about 16 to 20 courts. And the current mayor was present during that conversation. So that was June. October 8th, I sent you a positive email along with the city council, the city planners, and Samantha Wiley. And all the responses, they were positive, except for yours. And you wrote, quite honestly, I'm tired of hearing about pickleball. Please refrain. And my response was, I understand and I will refrain. I just wanted to illustrate the positive aspects of San Clemente pickleball. At the last meeting, I addressed the new council and the new mayor, and again, promoting pickleball in the community and also tournament revenue to help pay for pickleball. And Gene, you weren't present at this meeting, but you did send me an insulting email. you were excited about tournaments, and you were excited about tournament revenue. You asked me, how many courts would we need to have a tournament that size and to generate that much revenue? And we were talking about 16 to 20 courts. And the current mayor was present during that conversation. So that was June. October 8, I sent you a positive email along with the city council, the city planners, and Samantha Wiley. And all the responses, they were positive, except for yours. And you wrote, quite honestly, "I'm tired of hearing about pickleball, please refrain." And my response was, "I understand and I will refrain, I just wanted to illustrate the positive aspects of San Clemente pickleball." At the last meeting, I addressed the new council and the new mayor, and again, promoting pickleball in the community and also tournament revenue to help pay for pickleball. And Gene, you weren't present at this meeting, but you did send me an insulting email three days after Christmas. And you wrote, "I just watched your last three-minute presentation. Every time you speak, I become less convinced that pickleball courts are a good idea. If I were a pickleball player, I would find a new ambassador." Wow. Anyhow, then you went on to say you did vote to reconsider funding and you want to prioritize pickleball. However, I will oppose building courts for anything beyond recreation, not with tournaments in mind. So I just feel like you're sending me mixed messages. I am just promoting the ideas that you were in favor of. And besides that, is it common for a city official to send an insulting and intimidating email to people that get up and speak at these meetings? I hope not. That's just not cool. Anyhow, in closing, I hope that the new mayor and the other council members continue with the funding for the new courts. We're hoping for 16 so we can move and have enough room to play. And please vote to support San Clemente pickleball. The community needs these courts. Thank you for listening.
Vern West, followed by Casey Nolter, followed by Sharon Gecko.
Mr. Mayor, city councilman, my name is Vern West. I'm a 42-year resident of San Clemente and I'm an 85-year-old pickleball player. Pickleball is for old and young. I'm not going to give you my spiel, you've already heard it. I'm concerned on four courts and a question to Parks and Recs, are you planning on closing San G when we have four courts? Because right now, we're filling eight courts all the time. So to spend that kind of money for four courts, I think we're misguided a little bit. I think you should look at, at least have eight courts to replace the San G courts because we want these courts up at Steed to mitigate the problems that we're having with all the residents over there. It doesn't make sense to have four over San G and four up at Steed. You're still going to have the residents complaining. So to cut it short, I recommend that we go forward looking at eight courts rather than four. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Casey Nolter, followed by Sharon Gecko.
Nice to see you all. This is my first city council meeting and boy, it has been as thrilling as I'd always imagined it would be. I'm a nine-year resident here in what I consider the greatest town in America, small town in America, San Clemente. I'm also a business professional overseeing an annual seven-figure budget. So I understand differently than our federal government that sometimes it can't always be an "and," it has to be an "or." You have choices you got to make, priorities. Totally get that. I'm here, like many of my friends in the pickleball community, and I'm here tonight in support of prioritizing this investment in our pickleball facilities, as previously agreed upon. And yes, it's an investment, not an expense. I ask you, city councilmembers, what would you give to be able to recreate or play a sport with your dad? Your grandparents, your kids? Are they inviting you to play Call of Duty right now? On the Xbox? I'm guessing probably not. In such a divided society, a society growing more sedentary, more obese, less present, pickleball is the antidote for all of this. I can't think of anything else that solves so many problems in our society. It's truly the only fully-inclusive sport. It doesn't discriminate based on race, age, gender, or really even ability. Vern, that was just up here. Routinely kicks my butt on the pickleball courts. It's impressive, I have to say. Also, just for additional context, we're talking about how many courts. Did you know that in Naples, Florida, with two-thirds less residents in San Clemente, saw this opportunity for what it was, to get in front of the explosive growth of pickleball? And they built 64 courts. 64. So 64 courts, they host all kinds of tournaments, and beyond the cultural touchstone that this has provided for that city, it's also provided upwards of $15 to $25 million in annual revenue. It's significant. It's additional economic benefit that we're not seeing today in San Clemente. So let's not be narrow-minded about this. See the big picture for what it is. An opportunity to grow revenue for this town. This sport is growing leaps and bounds. We all know that. So please, I only ask this, help me repair my trust in politics and politicians in general, but also support the greatest cultural touchstone of our society today, and that is pickleball. Thank you.
Sharon Gecko, followed by George Spooner.
Hi, Sharon Gecko, 30-year resident, RSVP coordinator. I want to address Mr. Noblock about the noise complaints. At San Luis Rey, as soon as the courts went in, they got immediate complaints about the noise. In San G, there were no noise complaints for the first two years, not until the additional courts were going to be added. You appeased the residents by adding the sound laws. I'd like to see a show of hands of how many people here would be happy with only the four courts at Steed Park?
Without San G?
Without San G. How many people here would be happy with just the four courts? No one.
They're not supposed to address us.
None of us would be happy because you're reducing the amount of courts and the amount of court play. What you're doing is appeasing a few residents where, Mr. Noblock said, we were in the legal limit of sound. And in the meantime, you're upsetting maybe 500-plus residents who play pickleball on a fairly regular basis. I'm not sure of the number. Marty would know more. You know, we've come together as a community, we've raised money, we've had complaints about our fundraiser by one of the residents. When we're trying to move our, we're trying to raise money to move our courts and to improve their life and they just keep complaining about, you know, us enjoying our courts. And that's all I have to say. But I don't think any of us would be happy with just four courts if you take away our San G courts. Thank you.
George Spooner, followed by Frank Snyder, followed by Norina Capadona.
Hi, my name is George Spooner and I moved to San Clemente about a year and a half ago. I actually live in Shortliff, so I do hear a little bit of the pickleball situation. My house is one-quarter mile from the courts. There is a little bit of sound, you can hear it. One of the things I really liked about it and the reason we live where we do is because we enjoyed pickleball. We never played pickleball until we moved to the city. And then we did Parks and Recs and took the classes and we really enjoy it. San G is a destination point for pickleball for a lot of people in the area. We get people from San, we get not only San Clemente, we get Talega, we get San Juan Capistrano, Dana Point, Lake Forest. It's a destination point. California Coastal Commission, I understand San Clemente is in the process of recertification with the Coastal Commission. San G is actually located within the Coastal Commission Recreation Zones and it is designated as a recreational area. So I think we really need to check on that. It's a destination point, you should not be reducing the amount. Now that we find out that the noise is a significant problem, there are issues that we can do to reduce the amount of noise. In fact, I dropped off documents today with regards to Architectural Digest and what they say about pickleball, noise abatement issues. They can build the secondary fence around the outside of the fence of San G and create an air gap and put up the same sound-reducing measures to make it so the noise doesn't emanate out, it emanates up. They can also add in environmental, they can add in Italian cypress trees, which are those short, narrow trees, and that will also create the sound so it goes up instead of out. That should solve a lot of the noise issue problems. There's a lot of things that we can do to help solve the problem. Steed Park is, and it is a great advantage to adding the Steed Park. Steed Park is about 10 to 12 degrees hotter in the summertime than San G and that does make a difference. From someone playing pickleball at 85 degrees to 95 degrees, it does make a difference. You're going to find out that the number of people that play up there will probably be reduced significantly. People will start going to other cities and San Clemente is a family-friendly city. My daughter, who comes down from Brentwood, she comes down to our house in Shortliff because pickleball is close by. She's never played before until this. Thank you for consideration and I hope we can keep San G open.
City Attorney, I have a question in regards to that gentleman. Sir, your name again?
George Spooner.
In regards to Mr. Spooner, any Coastal Commission ramifications?
I was calculating in my mind whether this was within the coastal zone and I didn't believe it was. I'm looking at Samantha and Kyle, if they know. I thought it was outside the 1,000 feet of meeting and I tied, but we can certainly...
Can we research that, staff?
Yeah, we'll look at that. That would definitely make a difference.
Yeah, we need to research that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Norina Capadona and I live in San Clemente. I am reading this on behalf of our most senior player, Buzz Buster, who is 87-years-old. He got hurt at home and can't attend this evening. My name is Buzz Buster and I am unable to attend this evening's session due to health reasons. I have been a resident in San Clemente area for over 46 years. I was a judge for the American Arbitration Association for over 35 years with my offices here in San Clemente. I have been a tennis player most of my adult life, except for the last 15 years when I took up pickleball. Recently, I made an unofficial personal survey regarding locations of pickleball courts in the area. I was surprised and found out that San Clemente was the only city in Orange County without a permanent pickleball court. In my opinion, because pickleball is so popular and the fastest-growing sport in the United States, I found this situation appalling. I am 87-years-old and I have a dream. That dream is to play pickleball in the years I have left in the great and wonderful city of San Clemente. Sincerely, Buzz Buster. I also, I would like to add something. We have always discussed 16 courts in the past. The whole idea was to move us out of San G to Steed Park. We have eight courts at San G. How would you possibly move us out if you only build us four courts? There are long, long lines and we wait, wait, a half hour in between games. And there's so many of us standing out there because you haven't even given us chairs or, there's one little bench, we have one little bench. Okay? So please help us. I mean, you should be there on Saturdays and Sundays and see how many people are waiting to play.
Frank Snyder? Frank Snyder, no? Olivia Welch? No? Concerned resident is the final card.
There has been no determination to build out any of the items listed in the $404,000 contract except for courts. At some future date, you may decide that this is what the city should be spending their money on and God bless you if you do, but it has not yet been determined. The city twice decided that there was no need to obtain a SEQA, a parking study, a traffic study, a noise study, or according to one resident, a coastal recreation exception, before they converted a slab of concrete to pickleball courts in two residential neighborhoods. So why do you now need to have all these items to put down another slab of concrete? You don't. Just do what you did twice in the past. Obviously, it met with everybody's approval, city ordinances, the whole bit. So let's get on with it. I don't care if you build 100 pickleball courts, as long as they don't affect any residents' quality of life. For now, build the four courts. I know they want more, but let's get started. Build four courts. Just put them in the two, one of the two parking lots. It's already, whatever you called, whatever, compacted. So what's it going to cost to lay down concrete, put in a chain-link fence, and move the existing nets to San G? There's two parking lots. You can then take your time, decide what you want to do, how many millions of dollars you want to spend, and you will have exhausted of, pentance of the money to get some built for them. It could be done in 30 days. Again, obviously, according to the city, you don't need a SEQA, you don't need a parking study, you don't need a traffic study, you don't need a noise study. So why in the heck would you even need a coastal approval? Let's get it done, let's get what they want, and let's give every resident the equal quality of life. Thank you.
Do we have one of the speakers that you called before?
Hi, my name is Olivia Welch and I'm a 12-year-old San Clemente resident. We need an extension of Steed Park with more than four courts. Pickleball brings my family together and we love playing together. As a 12-year-old girl, there's not much to do with friends. Most of the time, I catch myself spending money at Target when I could be doing fun activities with my friends. On most days, people are available for pickleball, they're packed. With new courts, that wouldn't be a problem. I love seeing all ages, younger and older than me, playing pickleball. My name is Olivia Welch, I'm 12-years-old, and this is why we need an extension of pickleball courts at Steed Park.
Thank you, Olivia. Okay, well, we've concluded the comments, we've had the staff report. I think we're ready for a motion.
So I'll make a motion. Thank you. So I'll make a motion, but instead, the eight instead of four is a good point. So my motion is going to be, is to go with eight, eight courts instead of four. Direct staff to prioritize the construction of at least eight pickleball courts and necessary associated amenities as outlined in proposed Richard T. Steed Master Plan. Two, incorporate opportunities for optimizing the use of available funding sources and future construction. Three, approve and authorize Public Works Director City Engineered, Execute Contract Number C-22-67 by, between the City of San Clemente and RJM Design Group, providing engineering design services for the Richard T. Steed Memorial Pickleball Courts in the amount of $440,000. My question is, is that $400,000 with eight courts, that's $400,000 still stands, right?
It'll, we'll save a little bit, but not much.
Okay.
Second motion.
Okay, motion is James, second is Noblock. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think it's unanimous. Okay. Congratulations.
Everything is subject to all applicable environmental studies and mitigations.
Okay, folks, we're going to continue the meeting if you would, please be quiet while we continue the meeting. I think the next item is oral reports, oral communications, excuse me. Do you have any cards?
I have no cards for oral communications.
Okay, the next item is a report on commissions and committees. Do we have...
Okay, pardon me.
Oh, wait a minute, you have a late guy.
We have, is this for oral communications?
Okay, council, just a couple of quick things and I feel bad a little, what's that?
There you go.
I feel bad a little bit about this because I've got to say, Mayor Pro Tem, 90% of the things that you discuss, I agree with and the way you, you know, the things you bring up are great. I do want to touch on something, there was another speaker earlier that talked about it though, is I want to talk about some demeanor, respect for citizens, and the fact is, I, what brought this up, the last meeting when everybody got sworn in, let me just make a suggestion. I've been sworn in a lot of different things, a lot of times for, I've witnessed a lot of different swearing-in. And the best way to do it is the clerk or whoever's swearing you in, let them say what they have to say, then repeat it back and say, and then repeat it back. I'm sure that, Mayor Pro Tem, you're smart enough to memorize the whole thing and go through, but you actually stumbled at the end and you still had to rely on the city clerk. So I'm just saying, you know, you're not always the smartest guy in the room. Yeah, a lot of the times, but not always. And so just let it, let it flow because it kind of makes you look like a tool when you don't. I also want to bring up, just let you, council members know, and I'm too bad that Mayor Duncan isn't here because he's part of a... isn't here, because part of it relies on him, but I want to let you know, you got to watch, you know, all of you should watch each other, how you interact with people and what you do. And I just want to bring up like just a personal, and we know there's been some divisiveness on the council, and I hope that sees us, but just bring up a personal thing. Back in June, I was up for reappointment to the Public Safety Committee. And Mayor Protem, you voted no for me, even though all the rest of the council voted yes, so I did get on, but I was really concerned. I said, what did, what did I do to not meet your expectations? I mean, 38 years in law enforcement, and figured I was doing a good job, so I actually approached you during a break, and I said, hey, what's the deal? What can I do better? And you turned around and you, I won't say you ran, but you moved off quickly and never had the chance to have that conversation. And then I heard, you know, heard that maybe there was a problem, because I supported the mayor during his assembly race, and I was all of a sudden a liberal socialist. And I mean, I'm not, Gerald Gates is turning over in his grave right now, thinking I'm a liberal socialist, but that was like held against me or something. And I don't understand, because you voted for the liberal socialist as mayor. So I'm just confused, but, you know, you got to watch how you treat people and what you do. And I just, moving forward, I'd like to see more of that and less of the divisiveness. And that's, you know, well, one last thing, though. I did see some, I think I saw some socialists hanging around your Jeep, Mayor Protem. So you might want to get down there, because the last thing you'd want would be a socialist radical to stick something in your tailpipe. Thank you very much.
Are there any other comments?
No other comments.
Okay, the next item is, item 11, reports, commissions and committees.
Skip 9C.
That item was continued earlier.
I think that was held, was that held, that was held over. Do you have a report on committees and commissions? Okay, City Manager, do you have a report?
I do. Mayor Protem, you had raised the issue at your December meeting, your interest at the December meeting that we report back to the City Council concerning our staffing of the front counter and building permit service. And I was slow to respond, frankly. Your interest is being met. I should have caught it at the time. Lobby, in fact, is open from 7:30 to 5:30, with staff assigned as follows. From 7:30 to 12:30, we are open for all permit types, with an emphasis on over-the-counter permits, but we're available for all types of permits. Permitting staff from all divisions are available from, again, 7:30 to 12:30. There is a one-hour lunch break. It's a small staff, so we, there is an impact. Nonetheless, the lobby liaison desk is staffed during that one hour, between 12:30 and 1:30. That liaison provides status of information, pardon me, status information of submitted applications, explains our permitting process, provides permit applications, and schedules appointments if requested. From 1:30 to 5:30 after lunch, the lobby is again open and staffed by all permitting divisions. Between 4:30 and 5:30, there is a temporary limitation on credit card payments for now. That will be remedied when card readers are installed at the permit counter workstations in early February. So I'm pleased to report that your interest is in fact being met. I apologize for not having that information at the ready at your last meeting.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. City Manager?
No, sir, thank you.
Sid, you have some for the City Manager.
There was an item that was on our last agenda that got put over to this that I don't see on it. It was regarding a...
Primo meets?
Primo meets, yeah.
Yeah, that, if I recall, that was scheduled to a date certain at the February meeting at the request of the applicant.
It's scheduled for February 7.
I got it. I just...
Keep me straight, keep me square. I'm good.
Mr. City Attorney, do you have a report?
Mayor Protem, Council, thanks for your opportunity. I don't have anything else tonight.
City, I have a question. City Attorney, there is a new state law that took effect first of January, having to do with campaign contributions and refusals.
Oh, yes, thank you.
I know you sent an email out to us back in November, but it would be good if you would explain it one more time, particularly for the public.
In three quick phrases, I will. Previously, if a council member had income from a source, that, when that decisions relating to that source of income disqualified that member from participation, before January 1st, campaign contributions could not disqualify elected officials, local officials, from voting. That changed on January 1st, so that if a member of the council has received a campaign contribution dollar, campaign contribution of $250 or more, if that contributor appears before the council in connection with an item, that contribution disqualifies the member from participation. So, to summarize briefly, where before, you only had, you were only disqualified from decisions if you had personal income from a source. Now, political contributions can be disqualifying if the contributor appears before you.
And that's for 18 months.
Yeah, it's for 12 months.
12, 12 months.
12 months, and then it sunsets, yeah.
And, so I know the answer to this, but I want to ask you the question. So if there's a PAC, and that, you know, this does not limit PAC money.
No.
However, if the sole or primary contributor to that PAC happens to be person X, Y, and Z, does that pose a problem for the council member?
No, if, if, if money comes to elected officials from independent committees, independent PACs not controlled by that member, there can be no local regulation or state regulation of that contribution, yeah. And that's under the Citizens United case, the Supreme Court case, that exempts all money contributed from independent committees, from any state or local regulation. Can I just say one thing that I forgot to mention? These rules, according to the FPPC guidelines, apply to contributions received from January 1st of this year forward. There was a question about whether contributions received last year could be disqualifying. The FPPC, at the end of December, ruled that no, these rules apply to contributions made after the 1st of 2023.
Right. Council members, do you have any items?
I do. I want to talk about Fred Schwegels for a moment. So the iconic Fred Schwegels has a body of work that needs to be recognized, admired, and appreciated. A lot of it's under the control of the San Clemente Times, some of it is under, is possessed by his family, and other bodies, other pieces of his work, both photographs and writings, are copyrighted by the Orange County Register. We have a bare hallway out here. We have bare walls here. One of the things I would like to propose to council is a discussion on displaying that work on the second floor, possibly displaying his work throughout the building, bringing some of his work into these, into these bare walls. We have, we have a clock and an exit sign. So I've spoken with Nor Garret from the San Clemente Times, publisher. I've spoken with Fred's two sisters. His two sisters absolutely enthusiastically endorse doing something like this, and they would cooperate. There's a nonprofit, there is a certain nonprofit in town who has signed up, who will sign up to not only, we need to do this clap in a classy way, you know, this is, we don't go to Walmart and get $7.99 frames for this. So there's a nonprofit who said they'll step up and do both the restoration and the framing of these, these items. And wouldn't our city hall be a wonderful place to honor the iconic Fred Schwegels? So I'd like to have a discussion about that at our next meeting. Related to that, I had, I had a meeting with the Lifeguard Foundation. They have amazing photos, separate from Mr. Schwegels. They had a photo of James Arness, Matt Dillon, in the late 40s, posing at the beach with San Clemente lifeguards. Is that, is that cool or what? So I think not only, not only does Mr. Schwegels have a body of work that should be displayed in our beautiful city hall, I think, I think there are other elements, other organizations, which then calls for probably an appointment of a city archivist, and that probably city archivist I'm probably looking right at here. The, so, start off with a motion to...
Agendize the discussion?
Agendize the discussion.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you.
And, City Manager, I'm not sure there's a staff report required for that, so we only, we only need two. And I spoke, the only, the only council member I spoke with about this was Mayor Duncan, and he was enthusiastically supportive of it.
I think the Historical Society also has a lot of photos of the event. Any other council comments? Victor?
None, no.
Mark?
I have two things I'd like to bring up. Number one is I'd like to agendize for consideration the council's decision whether or not to have the city clerk keep notes during the closed sessions. For the last few years, I don't know how many years, we haven't had that happen. At least we haven't in the last two years since I've been on the council. Prior to that, the city clerk was always involved to keep track of, of the decisions that are made and the accuracy of those decisions. And I ask for that, because in the last couple of years, I've experienced a couple of times where, where my recollection of what happened in closed session isn't exactly what others thought. So I think in terms of openness and transparency, that would be helpful. So I'd like to agendize that for consideration.
I won't guarantee my support for it, because I want to hear from the City Attorney, but I will give you a second for discussion.
Okay, and I don't think we need a third staff report on that. The second thing I'd like to bring up deals with the priority that we all share, and that's for sand on our beaches. We all know we have an erosion problem, it's a serious problem. We know that within the next few months, we're going to be getting some Army Corps of Engineers sand on our beaches from Linda Lane to T Street. That's about a half-mile stretch. We've still got about four and a half miles of city beaches, or beaches in San Clemente, state-owned and city-owned, and some private-owned, that don't have sand. And what I'd like to do is to ask this council to consider moving forward with an application, joint application to the Coastal Commission, the Army Corps of Engineers, for a close-in offshore rainbow dredging permit to bring sand, which is sitting within 50, 100 yards of our beach, back onto the beach, to rainbow it back onto the beach. And I know that there's a lot of analysis that would need to be done, biological analysis, sand quality analysis, and that work needs to be done, but I, I think I would like to ask the city to move forward in that regard. By doing so, a couple of things happen. Number one is it's, it's telling the community that we need sand, it's important, it's letting the neighboring cities know that this is a potential, and other cities would want to join with us. It would also allow potential manufacturers or dredging operations that have barges the opportunity to share their expertise. And, and some people may say, well, you're getting the cart before the horse, we need to do all that analysis before. My thinking on this is that, that whether the cart's before the horse or the horse is before the cart, you have to have a destination, and the destination is sand, more sand on our beach. And I would like to ask this council to consider moving forward. What I'd like to recommend is that we agendize this with the idea that we would ask our Beaches and Parks Commission to join with other existing organizations that are currently focused on beach sand. The organization, what is it, Save Our, Save Our Beach San Clemente is one of the organizations. And I think we just need to be proactive and move forward, so that's my suggestion.
I could support something along those lines. There was something I was going to bring up this evening, but we punted on the commissions, committees, and assignments, but I think one thing I would like to see is a supercommittee developed within, with two council members and subject matter, maybe subject matter experts or members of the community who that are not subject matter experts, but a group that is focused on that. Maybe that's a good idea, maybe that's not a good idea, but I would like to incorporate that into your discussion.
And, and I would also add to that is that, you know, we have put, I was going to raise the similar things, but in the context of the commission, which we've delayed from this meeting to the next meeting, and since the mayor's not here and he's had an interest in this, it'd be probably more appropriate to wait until he's here to...
Yeah, we're all... But we can, we can agendize it for next week and have a full discussion, along with the commissioning committee reports.
So as long as we...
So it's on the agenda anyhow.
Well, it kind of is. It's the appointment of a commission to create a new one or to, or to take a course of action is not on the agenda. That's what I'd like to agenda this.
I think go with Mr. Novak's initial motion. It would be wise to dovetail, to dovetail a commission committee into, into that discussion.
I agree. I'm not saying I would support creating a commission, but I think the discussion's totally worthwhile. So that's my, do we need three for, I don't know that we need a staff report at this point, but...
If it's appended to that discussion, you'll have it anyway, so that's fine.
So can you just, like, repeat the motion, please?
Well, the motion would be to agendize a discussion of asking this city to make an application to the Coastal Commission, the Army Corps of Engineers, for a close-in offshore dredging operation that rainbows the existing sand that is located off our beach back onto the beach.
I think we do need a staff report on it.
If, if that was going to be action by the council, then you'd want that as separate action, not a supercommittee.
Okay, we have two, we have three, three...
Do we need three?
For a staff report.
If you want staff analysis on it, I don't know.
Who agendizes, three, that's a staff report with the agendized item.
I will be the third.
Okay, thank you. Any, any other council items that need to be brought up?
Just on, on what Mr. James was saying, do we need to agendize for two weeks from now to bring up a new supercommittee, as you called it, on, on...
That will be, that is part of the discussion, right.
Okay.
So I have a motion on adjournment. I move that the next regular council meeting is scheduled to take place on February 7th, 2023. The closed session will begin at 5:00 PM, and the regular business meeting will begin at 6:00 PM. The meeting will take place in the council chambers located at 910 Cali Negocio, second floor, San Clemente, California.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned.